Okay.
Yeah?
Load a robot.
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to call our April 28th work session to order. And it's time, Mr. Slade, would you pray for us?
I'll do that. Let's pray. Once again, we stop right here at the beginning of the meeting to acknowledge that we need your power and your presence with us here today. We look forward to being able to conduct the business of the county, Lord, in a way that is pleasing to you. And I pray, Father, that you will give these gentlemen the wisdom they need today to make decisions that are in keeping with their will and in the best interests of our citizens. Lord, we thank you for those that you called and equipped and skilled to be able to provide emergency response for us and our law enforcement individual. Lord, and thank you for our shared, in whose absence we recognize this morning, as he's attending to an emergency situation. Lord, we don't want to take these folks for granted. We want to acknowledge just how important they are and how much we appreciate them. Father, I pray for their safety and their safety in terms of Christ's name.
Amen. Okay, thank everybody for coming. We have first on our agenda is public comments. We have Mr. Carl Arden.
Art.
Art. Come on, Carl.
Can we do a plan?
Oh, we will right after this. No, go ahead, man.
Thank you for having me again this morning. For our discussion, the last time, we've gone back to the design, made two changes, added a six-site in Cato to help the coverage towards the pocket area, and then revised the pager number to an exact number. So this time, I'll give you the paper beforehand instead of afterwards.
It's probably good we're sitting down.
So I have, these are the new, this is the new quote.
Good, we're sitting down.
Yeah, that number went up rather than down.
That's right. So I'll give, I have the, I have the old one, too, if you want to do it with the character. I brought, I brought those.
I want to sharpen that pencil.
So what is the difference between this one and our old one?
Right, so the, so the difference here is that we added another site. So it was, it was a five-site system beforehand, and then we added a new site to increase the coverage towards the pocket area. So it's now a six-site. We added entirely a new site.
Well, I know at our last meeting, it was mentioned to maybe look at it, but are we having problems?
I mean, I just looked at the map down there. Bob, are we having problems down there?
As far as the, well, there's no signal down there.
There's no coverage.
But do they get their takes or can they communicate down there?
Yeah, this was brought up, if you remember, a couple of months ago on the, but yeah, the paging system is going down, the alpha numeric paging system. And it's, you know, comes from the use, and it's been going down irregularly. And this was the alternative, that y'all want to look at several alternatives. If you remember, I proposed, there are several different pages out there, but the only one that actually responded was Motorola with the, similar to the old system that we had, which would eliminate a lot of duplication in the, for the dispatchers. It was easy of use, and the volunteers were wanting a pager alternative, and also if the municipalities wanted to sign on board, and, you know, if they wanted to buy, you know, they would, you know, be able to get on the system also.
No, I guess the question, though, are they, are they respond, communication down there? Is it, is it not, you know, they're not getting?
Yeah, well, they don't have any pagers now.
Oh, they don't, so they're not getting things, they don't have them?
Right, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I have, I have no problem going with the five-site right now, and we evaluated ninety days, and if it turns out that, you know, they're getting communication down there and there's not an issue, we can stick with the five-site, but I would like to reserve the opportunity.
Oh, yeah.
If there are a dead spot down there, we come back and put that six-site up.
Oh, I, I agree completely. We just, this is a whole lot that's not budgeted here.
Ooh. Correct.
Yeah, the, the five-site that you have in your hand also is still totally a valid design. It's just up to you what you want to do with the coverage.
And this is the same pagers?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Same, same pagers.
And these are the pagers that y'all are recommending we go with?
Yeah, that's the one that all the volunteers want, and the exact number is three hundred and sixty-one, is the count we got from the fire chief.
Is that all we're going to buy is three hundred and sixty-one?
That's all I'm recommending to buy. I mean, the problem with that giving you an exact number, and I'm going to just throw out, let's say, Pele Hachi Fire Department, you know, today they've got, and I'm not discussing the exact number, twenty-eight fire. But next month, they put on, you know, after the end of school, you know, guys graduate, get, you know, have some birthdays, get old enough, they may add six guys. So a month from now, you know, the count may be three, six, five. Well, if Star adds four, you know, next month, it's always a change in number. Guys come on, guys drop off, you know.
But when we purchase these initial, then it's going to be up to fire departments after that, too.
That would be my recommendation.
Yeah, okay.
But that's.
Are you saying that we're not up right now? We're not getting pagers currently?
Getting paged, though, with the radio system.
But the alpha numeric is down still?
Alpha numeric is still down. It's supposed to be installed at the end of this week.
Man, that was like an emergency purchase we did, and it's still not up.
Yeah, that's correct.
Do we think it's installed by the end of this week, or is that just kind of a?
That's what I'm asking, that's what I've been told by Jackson Communications.
Did it just take a long time to come in?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, they had to build it wherever the guy is, you know, and that was one of the problems.
Glad we weren't in a real emergency.
You got to find, you know, it's the single source.
Yeah.
Guy that we had to send it back to, and that was one of the issues that we've all had with it is, you know, apparently there's one company or a small select group of guys that can fix that.
Okay, I guess we can put this on our agenda for the fifteenth or sixteenth and see if we know how to pay for it.
Right.
By then.
By then, we can figure that out.
If I could just ask one thing. So at that meeting, would you like to see the five-site design with the three sixty-one? So the, the five-site design you have in your hand still has three hundred and fifty from last time, so do you want me to change that to three sixty-one?
Yes.
Okay. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Y'all good with that?
Now we're going back to the planning commission.
Thank you. Yes, now we're going to do what we're supposed to done start with. They pointed that out there. All right, we're going to call to order our planning commission meeting now. First, we have consideration of minutes.
Second by Mr. Morris.
Second by Mr. Morris, and all the papers say aye. Aye's aye. Old business?
Okay, under old business, we're just reviewing hearing scheduled for Monday, May second. The first item is a conditional use permit for Jamie McCafferty on Mount Helm Road. Mr. McCafferty is seeking the conditional use permit to place a modular home on this property. It's on the southeast side of Mount Helm Road. It's a nine-point-three-four acre parcel. It's zoned RE1. It's a vacant wooded lot, and he's planning to buy two to four acres of this property if, if he's approved for the placement of a modular home. This is, the driveway on the left accesses the property. There's one other home at the very back that uses that same driveway. This is a view of that property. This is looking back toward twenty-five, and these are surrounding properties. The property has been posted, and the notice was published in the paper. We've not received any calls.
Okay.
The second item is a conditional use permit for Deborah Henry at thirty-three thirty Nicky Lane. Ms. Henry is seeking the conditional use permit to construct a guest house. The property is located at the end of Nicky Lane. It's a nine-acre parcel. It's zoned RE1. This is an aerial view. She has an existing home on the property. Her daughter is going to move into her existing home, and Ms. Henry is going to occupy the guest house. This is her site plan. It shows her existing home, shows an existing shop, and this is the proposed location of the guest house. This is a view of that property. That's her existing home and the shop, and this is the approximate location for the guest house. These are surrounding properties. The sign was posted here as well, and the notice published, but no calls have been Next is a conditional use permit for Zachary Ainsworth at ten seventy-one Cato Road. Mr. Ainsworth is seeking the conditional use permit to store materials for his railroad and timber company businesses. It's on the south side of Cato Road. It's a twenty-acre parcel that's zoned A2. It's an aerial view of the property. This is his site plan. He shows an existing shop and a shed on that property. Equipment is stored in the existing metal building. This is just a view at the intersection of Cato and County Line Roads. This is the property and the shop. That property has been posted and the notice published, and we've not received any calls here either. These are surrounding properties. Next is a conditional use permit for Tanya Miner on Joe Myers Road. Ms. Miner is seeking the conditional use permit to place a nineteen ninety-nine sixteen-by-seventy-six manufactured home on this property. It's located at the end of Joe Myers Road. It's a twelve-acre parcel. It's zoned R1B. It's family land. This is an aerial view of that property, and there are two other homes on that property also. This is her site plan, showing placement of the mobile home. This is the approximate location of where that manufactured home will be placed. And these are the other two homes that are on that property. That property was posted and the notice published, but no calls have been received on it as well. Next is a conditional use permit for Mary Leonberger at four forty-three Seventh Day Road. She's seeking the conditional use permit to place a twenty sixteen sixteen-by-seventy-eight manufactured home on the property. It's located on the east side of Seventh Day Road. It's a two-acre parcel. It's zoned RE1A. This is an aerial view. Mrs. Leonberger's home is on this property, and years ago, her sister also had a manufactured home on the property, but she moved to be closer to her job. She's retired, and she wants to move back and put the mobile home in the exact same spot as it was before, as shown on this survey. This is a view of where the mobile home will be placed. This is Mrs. Leonberger's home, and these are surrounding properties. That property was posted and the notice published, and we've not received any calls here either. Next is a conditional use permit for Aaron Utoff, two seventy Green Hill Road. He's seeking the conditional use permit to place a twenty thirteen thirty-two-by-eighty manufactured home on this property that's located on the west side of Green Hill Road. It's a three-acre parcel that's zoned RE1A. The site, the aerial view shows an existing home on the property that's owned by his father. And this is his site plan. He shows the existing home and the location for the new manufactured home at the rear of the property. This is his father's existing home, and these are surrounding properties. That property was posted and the notice published, and we've not received any calls. Next is a conditional use permit for Ron Murphy, Murphy Real Estate, at one forty-nine Stoll Road. Mr. Murphy is seeking the conditional use permit to park equipment, trucks, and trailers from his landscape and construction company. The property is located on the southeast, I mean, on the northeast corner of Stoll and Highway four seventy-one. It's a thirty-nine-acre parcel. It's zoned C2. This is an aerial view showing the existing metal building that's on that property. That's just his site plan, showing the metal building. And this is the property. And these are adjoining properties or surrounding. That property was posted, notice published, and no calls have been received. Okay, the last item is a conditional use permit for Clifton Rogers, Jr. at two fifty-two Clover Valley Boulevard. He's, y'all seen this several times now. I don't know if you want to see the pictures again.
No.
It's for the Five Star Lodge and Events Venue. John has had an opportunity to go out and do a preliminary inspection, and I thought he might want to update y'all on his findings.
Please do.
The easiest way to set the roof on the first seventy-five feet, all that framing's going to come off, and the floors will have to come up.
Of what?
The lodge. The foundation will have to be redone, and it'll have to be completely rewired. It's so overloaded, I don't know how that'd cause a fire. Yeah, it's, 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 it's terrible.
Is that it right there? Is that the picture?
All right, we'll see what the, um...
Who's the pointer? The name pointer.
The point to the top part. Right.
There's a dot.
From right there, from that point all the way forward that way, it's got to be totally rebuilt. The roof's sagged so bad, it is starting to crimp the metal in the middle.
Wow.
And the foundation's the same shape.
What is it, concrete? I mean, it's a slab?
It's got it sitting on a conventional, but it's four-by-four, sitting on little deck pads, and they used four-by-fours for beams that are sagged, and, um...
What about this back half there?
Um, it's, it's not as out of shape. They use trusses back there. Brian has no roof bracing at all.
Oh.
The deck is screwed into the siding. It's holding two huge condensing units, so that, the deck will have to be fixed. The porches on the back half, they'll have to be reframed, because they're just screwed into the baseboard. And he used some on-site cut lumber, some pine they cut up, and so it's not graded, and so that's a problem, but a lot of it has started to sag. I don't know if they didn't dry it all the way before he used it, so there's a lot of problems. I've talked to him about it, and I've advised him, go get an architect, have him redraw the floor plans.
Carl will pick up his eyes.
And give us, to show us how they're going to fix it. Like the roofs, probably an easy fix, it'd be just trusses, but the foundation's going to require them taking the floor up and swapping out floor joists and beams, and either pouring, um, footing around the perimeter of it, or ripping everything up and putting the slab down, and just taking the front part of the building down.
But it doesn't appear it has a footing?
Oh, it doesn't have a footing, no. It's sitting on little, little concrete blocks.
Oh.
With four-by-four posts.
So he won't be opening anytime soon, then?
Uh, no. He says he's going to fix it.
My question to you is, and I think I mentioned to somebody about the entrance road to this property. If we grant a variance for entertainment and that kind of venue, that's going to increase the, the traffic dramatically. Make sure that road's wide enough and it is, can handle. I mean, and that, somebody said it's fairly narrow. I never have been down that road to get to it, and I don't know if that's within our jurisdiction or not.
Do you get an invitation?
Huh? I missed that one. But I'm not sure if that's within our, our legal right to, to address or not, but it's something to definitely look at if you can.
John, I wanted to ask, add one thing to it. Going by what you've told me here on this, I know the fire department probably hasn't had a chance to pre-plan or, or look at this building, obviously, because you can't get access to it. But I do want to get something noticed to those guys at Langford, that's Langford Response District, is that right? Probably the Langford and the Reservoir Response District, Fire Response District. They need to be aware of this structure here for collapse issues. You've already mentioned the point that the wiring is so bad.
What I'd get him to address, the electric gate, the flame.
Yeah, well, in the same sense, say this building catches on fire, and we get a fire department response out there, these guys don't need to make entry into this building. I mean, from a safety standpoint, obviously, we just, if it's holding up the way you're saying it is, and I believe you, it's definitely a life safety hazard on that. We need to get some kind of notice to our volunteer department, Langford, and even Reservoir, or anybody else that would be mutual aid into that. Brian, can you, can you check on that? Be sure they're notified of this building here and the structural components of this thing's not safe for firefighting? Okay. Thanks for bringing that up, very much.
What, what?
What about our other issues?
I was asking him about the cabins as well.
Well, the one cabin we got into, the other one was locked, we couldn't get in there yet, but the one cabin I got in, down by the pavilion, it had similar issues.
Was that a cabin you just showed?
This is the cabin.
It's that two-story one right there. That one, that's the one I got.
What was the interior?
The interior of the, we don't have interior pictures of the cabin.
Oh, I thought you just, that was the interior.
Oh, this is the lodge.
Oh, that's the lodge.
Oh, the lodge.
Oh, okay.
These are the lodge pictures.
Yeah. We just lost, um...
There it is.
Is that the lodge?
So the one cabin you were able to gain access to, it also is...
It's got similar problems.
Okay. But he is, have you got any writing that these are not open for business, and they need to be brought up to, so that he can't say that we didn't inform him or there's some gray area?
No, I didn't. I was talking yesterday about it, where he understands that he cannot use them for anything.
Okay, all right.
Do we need to have, does he need to have anything in writing?
We can put that in writing.
I think that's probably wise.
Okay.
What, what about, I know this is not, we're not on that subject.
Has he started addressing his other issues?
Uh, he did. Dwayne has been out, and he's made some progress, however, we can't tell exactly how much. I spoke with him on the phone, and he said he was halfway done. I'm not sure what Dwayne thinks about that measure, but...
I don't think halfway. I called for Jim Pochette. He said that he had made about ten loads in his landfill, but other than that, he hadn't said, unless it was just a scratch on the circus there.
Oh, all right. Okay.
All right. At least he is, has moved some, so that's, that's good for him.
Okay, moving on to new business?
Okay, the first item under new business is a dimensional variance request by Robert Wall, Jr. at five sixty-nine Seventh Day Road. Mr. Wall was previously approved by administrative review to place a fourteen-by-fifty-five manufactured home on the property. It's on the east side of Seventh Day Road. It's a one-acre parcel. There's an existing home on this property, an old home, that Mr. Wall wants to tear down and leave one room for storage. Because of this, he's unable, he's determined now that he is unable to meet the front setback of thirty feet, and so he's requesting a variance of twelve-point-six feet from the front setback. This is his site plan, and this is where he's showing the placement of the mobile home. He's closest here. He's only got seventeen-point-four feet, and then that's the existing house that he's going to tear down to one room. He has to keep ten feet between the house and the trailer, and so now he has realized that there's a problem. I'm not sure if he's here today or not, if you have any questions.
They are.
They are? Okay.
I've looked at it. I make motion to set that public hearing.
Okay, motion by Mr. Morrison, set the public hearing.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Gaines, all the papers say aye. Aye's aye.
Okay, the next item is a conditional use permit for Sonny Betty at one oh five Jack's Place. Mr. Betty is requesting a conditional use permit to construct a two thousand seven-hundred-and-fifteen square foot convenience store on the southwest corner of Old Fannin Road and Jack's Place. This is a point-six-five acre parcel that's zoned C2. That's an aerial view of the property, and this is his site plan. Mr. Betty wants to see if he can be approved before this, for this use, before he purchases the property. His parents own the property now. They initially had a permit in two thousand and four, before zoning was adopted, to construct the convenience store, but they didn't start anything, and so now he wants to try to construct a convenience store there. Like I said, this is just a preliminary site plan, showing the placement of the C-store at the back of the lot. He knows that if he's approved for the conditional use, he'll be required to come back with more detailed drawings for the site plan architectural review. He doesn't want to incur any more expense.
Sure.
Until he knows if he can do, do this.
There's no red light there. There's no red light right there at all, but I'm good with setting a hearing for it.
Well, we don't have a choice on that.
Set that.
Motion by Mr. Cross, set the public hearing. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any more discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye's aye.
All right, next is a site plan architectural review for Allen's Supermarket at seven sixty-six Highway four sixty-eight. Mr. Allen is proposing a two thousand five-hundred-and-twelve-foot expansion of his existing facility. He plans to add a buffet line for takeout only, no dining. The addition is going to be on the west side of the building at the existing loading dock. You can see that in this picture. It's going to square up with the front of the building. Well, I'll tell you this. There's an existing wooden fence on that west side of the property line already, and he's going to reroute the entrance to the loading dock on the east side of the building. His materials and color are going to match the existing building. Mr. Parker doesn't see a problem with the drainage there, and Mr. Allen is here, Mark Allen, if you have any questions for him today.
You're going to enter down the little road? Is that what, what he's saying?
Oh, on the other side.
The little road's on the west side?
Well, on the west side, it's going to square up with the front of the building, so...
If it's trying to enter into the dock.
Oh, from the east side.
All that dock and those garbage dumpsters, all of that will be done, but the whole front of the store, you have to do this look, recognize.
Okay.
We're going to relocate all the loading docks and all their stuff, and everything that's behind the fence, we're going to store.
Okay.
And move the docks and those dumpsters and everything away, further away from the rest of it and everything, and it keeps down the trucks from having to actually pull the road back into existence.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the site.
Motion by Mr. Morris, second by Mr. Morrison. Any discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye's aye. Thank you, Martin.
Okay, next, we have some nuisance hearings.
Correct.
First nuisance hearing we have today, gentlemen, is the Larry Elliott, one forty-four
Webb Circle, District One. We'll open that public hearing, and this is a continuation of a nuisance property consideration that's already been underway, so we'll go back and take a look at the pictures. Renee, if you'll help us.
All right, these pictures, we've gotten a complaint, multiple complaints about a house that had burned and needed to be cleaned up. These pictures were taken before the last planning commission meeting on March the thirtieth. Somebody did go in and tear it down. They left a pile of debris. It was continued just to see if any more progress would be made. These pictures were done yesterday, and somebody is still making progress to clean that, so they're, they're getting there.
Okay.
Is, is there anyone here on the Larry Elliott matter? What I would suggest, given the fact that there's still progress, if I recall correctly, this is the one that the church is involved?
No.
No.
You're not church.
No.
We had a hard time catching, making contact with whoever this is. We finally sent a letter just to an address we found. I forget what town it was in, but it must have worked.
It has something to do with arson, reading it was not being, had torn down for years. I think it's kind of tied up, and then, anyway, we've been working on it for quite some time, but then all of a sudden, it started to disappear, so...
Starting to get cleaned up a little bit.
That's good.
My suggestion would be that we continue it, continue to monitor it.
Right.
There's still a little bit of work that's left to be done to get it in the shape we'd like to see it. I would assume the community is satisfied that, that progress is being made, but I would, I would suggest we continue this as we did before.
I agree. When you want to continue to our next planning meeting?
Yeah, I think so. I make a motion just to continue it as long as progress, progress is being made.
Motion by Mr. Morrison to continue this to our next meeting. Second by Mr. Morris, any discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye's aye.
Next item is a continuation of the Deborah Wade, seven thirty White Road, District One nuisance consideration. We'll ask for Nate to demonstrate that we'll reopen that public hearing.
All right, we received a report of a structure under construction in February of this year without a building permit. We sent a letter, certified letter to Mrs. Wade, Deborah Wade, informing her that she was in violation of zoning and building codes and that the structure should be removed from the property immediately. She owns a one acre parcel that's zoned RE one A, which only allows one dwelling per acre. She lives in an existing mobile home on the property now. There's also issues with building codes. This is just a view of that building. We've had some conversations with Mrs. Wade. I'm not sure if she's here today or not either. She had said she was going to attend.
Anyone here speak on the nuisance consideration for Deborah Wade, seven thirty White Road? Anyone? Gentlemen, in this case, we, you know, we discussed this last planning commission meeting we had, and the decision was made to continue it, to give us an opportunity to try to continue the conversations that were being had with whomever it was that was struggling or attempting to construct this. And that obviously has not gone anywhere.
She was supposed to be here, so I assumed.
Yeah, right.
My suggestion.
The gentleman in construction, it's, it's not Miss Wade. He's the one that's been, has been in contact, I think with you and myself, but.
I, I spoke with her after the March thirty-first meeting and told her it was continued today and told her she needed to be here.
Yeah.
So, she's, over the phone, she seemed all right, you know?
She had had some health issues.
That's right, I recall that now.
Right.
My suggestion at this stage would be that we, you got to, you can continue it and keep trying, but my thought would be to declare the nuisance and let the justice court deal with it.
I don't see much other choice. The other, only thing, I think we, the last we talked, they were talking about turning it into a storage, is that correct?
That is one of the things they've mentioned. You know, they've called it a deer camp, been a small house.
It's been everything, it's going to be built and be moved and.
A storage building, but now, it does have, he says it has a small kitchen, small bath, and a bedroom, so that's, to us, is a dwelling.
Right.
That looks like dwelling.
I, I, I just like declaring nuisance move. I'm getting numerous calls on what's going on with it.
So what do we want done with it, though?
Well, that's, that was my next thing, what are we going to do with it?
I mean, I think justice court's going to need to know what.
Taken down.
Needs to come down.
Okay. Because they can't have a second dwelling on that property.
On the one acre, that's right.
And, and so, just to give you the story, Renee, I think, shared this with you. We talked to them about, okay, bringing this up to code, just like we're doing with this other property, and then she, but she'd had to tear down the, or move the existing mobile home. Well, then she, they backed up and said, well, now we just turn it to a storage. And we don't want to move the other mobile home. So, I mean, but now we're, we're back to, they're not here even today.
Yeah.
So, I look for them to then now come back after it goes to, declared a nuisance, go to justice court, come back and reapply and come back as a storage building. So I don't, I really don't know where, where we are, what we're going to.
Well, they wouldn't have to come back to us for a storage building, would they?
They wouldn't have to come back for a storage building, you know, still not.
But they would probably have to gut it, though, to make it a storage, but anyway.
Right.
I was just curious what.
I don't want it to be built, finished out, slashed, storage, but could live in it.
Yeah, that's right. All right. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Morrison to declare it a nuisance.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrow, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
The next item is the Kimmerly and Robert Howell, three twenty-five Cedar Hill Drive, District Three, nuisance consideration. This time we'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask for Nate to demonstrate the photos.
All right, this is at three twenty-five Cedar Hill Drive at Cedar Ridge subdivision. We've received numerous complaints dating back to October thirteen about the condition of this property. Rubbish, debris, tall grass. Our certified mail was received. We've had, we've been contacted by Mrs. Howell. These pictures were taken February twenty-ninth of sixteen. And then these are the current pictures that were taken yesterday. There has been some work to clean the property. And the Howells are here today.
This time we'll open the floor to hear from Mr. Ms. Howell.
The property has been.
Say his name.
We are constantly updating, but it's going to take us a little while longer to get it cleaned up. Major problems were my health and my wife's health. We're talking about major surgery, back surgeries and heart surgeries on both of our parts. We have three totally disabled parents that we help to take care of also. They've been in and out of the hospital. This has been an ongoing thing since about May of two thousand twelve. We've been in and out of hospitals, and until recently, we've just gotten back on our feet well enough to take care of these issues. And we're just asking for a little waiting, see a little more time.
Taking into consideration the work they have done, I make a motion, we continue this until next month.
Same.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines, to continue this next meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Just for the record, we'll state the obvious, that was Robert Howell at three twenty-five Cedar Hill who spoke to you.
Thank you.
The property owner. The next item is the Virginia Garner, one thirty-four Geolatti Drive, District One property. We'll open that public hearing for nuisance consideration, I'll ask for Nate to demonstrate the photos.
All right, we've received complaints in February of this year due to the rubbish and debris all over the yard. These pictures were taken February twenty-fourth. The certified mail was received, the notice of the hearing letter was received. These pictures were taken yesterday, and there hasn't been any significant change.
This time, is Virginia Garner present? As president, I don't see Ms. Garner or any representative of Ms. Garner stepping forward. This time we'll close that public hearing, it'll be appropriate to, to take action.
I declare nuisance.
Motion by Mr. Morrison to declare this nuisance. Second by Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right. We have a motion to recess till June second? Motion by adjourned.
I got one question up for, Renee. Well, I, that's all, I can ask you afterwards, that's my choice.
Okay.
It's just, I want to update on something.
I have a motion by Mr. Morrow to adjourn. Second by Mr. Gaines, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. All right. We are adjourned our planning commission meeting and back end our board supervisors meeting. Next on our agenda is Ms. Bridget Herring.
Good morning.
Morning, Bridget, morning.
We requested proposals for lawn maintenance, and we received two proposals.
I'm ready to stop.
Look at you, yeah, you learned it.
Not careful, you get cut. First proposal from Jeremy Giles. He was supposed to have totaled the properties and he did not. He's got each property listed out. Someone wants to add them up for me, they may.
Do we need to act on them today?
No, we're taking it under advisement, we're going to act on them Monday.
All right.
But I mean, yeah, I can do it if you want.
You got to open up one.
But the proposal they requested, they'd be total, have a cover sheet. The second proposal is from Expressive Lawn. Total for the, all of the buildings annually is twenty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-two dollars. And that is, he also, she also included the siren locations and the siren power stations.
Is that currently, do we do those currently?
Yeah, we had a contract on the sirens, we had added it last summer and it expired in November. That's only five cuttings per year that they maintain that. The rest of the properties, they do April through October every week, and then November through March once a month. This is only lawn maintenance, this isn't landscaping, it's just the cuttings.
Okay, all right. I have a motion to take these under advisement.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Morrison.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cross, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you, Bridget. Mr. Milner.
Thank you, Mr. President. The road department is seeking authority to launch a citizen input and issue resolution software. This software was acquired by the county back when we purchased the CityTech software. This software will allow for citizens to report issues and track their requests. It's all web-based, basically the citizen fills out a form that specifies a name, location, and the issue. The form does not prompt CityTech. It is strictly a form for the road department to view, and it takes action by the road department to prompt a work order. The information provided by the work request, it will only show work description requests and status of the work order, and all this will be available through the county's website.
So can you explain to me the process if a citizen wants to input a work order themselves?
They don't have that capability. There will only be staff in the road department will be able to actually input a work order.
So what does a citizen do then?
The citizen is filling out a form that is submitted through the website, and basically that form is sent to me or the road department staff, and they have a check mark whether or not that's been taken action on. And basically, we track if those forms have been addressed by whether or not they have been taken action. So it'll actually take someone from the road department to take that information and enter it into CityTech for a work order.
Supposed to be a phone call, is this?
Right. What's the difference if they were to call my number, leave a voice message, then this email? Would it be, I mean, is it pretty much the same? Someone's got to take it and review it, decide it before, it's not going in yet.
Right, it, it would take, there's still, there's still human interaction for it to get into CityTech, whether that be one of y'all calling up to the board of supervisors or a citizen calling up there. Right now, that information is strictly coming in through phone, by mouth, and it's being written down on a pad, and then it's being entered into CityTech for a work order to be taken action on.
But it'd still be done that way.
Correct.
It's just giving them an extra option.
Right.
It just gets another, it gives the citizens another avenue to submit any work request.
Derek, would one alternative be to have a temporary or testing period to see how this works?
Correct.
I assume we've already spent the money, though.
We have spent the money, and there are always going to be bugs to work out along the way, but we do plan a trial period to make sure that there aren't any things that need to be worked out before we go full launch, as I say.
We don't, we don't need to hire a whole staff to be action.
No, no. We have, we have staff in place to make this work.
Well, my concern is, same as what I've had before, is, well, several, but the description on completion of the project. Currently, we're not there.
Correct, get the work completed.
It seems like, I don't know what form they're going to be getting, but I know now, of last week, since we started getting this automated update, you know, I'm not getting individual reports any longer that are shown on them. But on the, just the form, there's nothing at all on there that says the work that has been performed.
Right, what we, what we will do moving forward is we've just got to get more detailed in our notes section to actually show how that work order has been resolved.
Well, before we go live with this, we need to address that.
Correct.
You know, I mean, I don't want this to be out to the public and they got a ditch needs to be cleaned or, or, you know, a sinkhole or limbs need to be picked up and we're not having any description of.
It just says ditch clean.
I mean.
Or it just says completed, too.
But.
And you want to know, did it clean?
Still, though.
Or what, what they did.
Still need you to contact these people rather than emailing them. We need to have a face-to-face or verbal communication from you if we're not going to do it, because, you know, if, if a situation we can't resolve, we need to have personal communications.
Absolutely, my, I know, you know, the majority, I would say, a lot of you in the rural community, that's what they expect. They won't hear your voice, or see you.
Especially if the answer is, we can't help you.
Yeah, well, I mean, if we can get it taken care of, it's easy, you know?
They just want to hear one way or another.
But it's those ones that we can't, that emailing, I mean, that's cold and, and it's really not descriptive, and it makes our constituents feel like maybe we just aren't caring.
Well, I mean, the girls will tell you here, and I get emails from them, they say, we tried to take their information, but they wanted to speak to someone, they wanted to talk to you, or, you know. So, you know, that's, some of them don't want to just, they want to feel a little more, a little more personal touch than just that, type me a note and said, I'll take care of it.
I like the direction we have, and I just want to make sure the product we're putting out is where we need to be.
And, and a lot of them just, the email's fine, but I mean, there's, there are numerous ones, so. You ain't got time just to call me?
What happens if we have someone who submits a form and it's not something we can address? How do they get dealt with?
Then if we can't address it, it's our responsibility to contact them and say that we can't instead of just ignore it, so.
Okay.
I mean, it won't be like emails.
So there will be follow-up, though, rather than just.
And, and I would envision, there are some folks that, that want to be contacted by email, and we, it will be up to us to make sure that we, that we ask the citizen, do they want to be followed up with a phone call or an email? What is their preference for follow-up?
That would be good if that was on that website or page.
Right.
Because I would say it's fifty-fifty, fifty percent want to hear it from you, fifty percent do.
Right. Well, the thing is, if it's something you can't do, I think you definitely need to.
Yeah.
Talk to them, don't just say we can't.
I agree. We need to tell them why we can't.
Right.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, gentlemen. The first item under my section is a, a simple matter, although it's five lines of text on your agenda.
Real simple?
Yeah. We're asking, we want it to be as descriptive as possible for the purposes of the minutes, because this is a court of action. We will get from time to time lawsuits filed by, by our prisoners. Pro se, they're generally pro se lawsuits, Steve, you are very familiar with this process. Oftentimes, well, not oftentimes, virtually every time those are filed in federal court. What happens when the lawsuit is filed, especially by someone who is incarcerated? They will make an argument to the judge that they do not have the funds or access to funds to be able to hire a lawyer, number one. Number two, they don't have access to funds to be able to pay for what goes along with filing a lawsuit. The service of the summons to the defendants who have been named, for instance. Those, that, there is a fee associated with that. So they will ask the court for permission to proceed in the matter, in the name of a pauper, without having to pay for certain court costs and expenses, of which is included the service process. The court will oftentimes impanel a hearing on that matter. They will make a finding that the person is in fact a pauper and allow them to proceed. And then the process becomes that somebody has got to serve process. And one way to handle that court process is by having the defendants voluntarily waive service. So they contact, the court contacts the defendants, of which Rankin County is, is normally one in these pro se prisoner litigation contexts. And they will ask us to receive process, okay? So that's on behalf of the county. And I like to come to you guys and get authorization to accept process instead of having them formally serve us and incur the expense of that, okay? That's all it is. You're giving me authority to, in this particular lawsuit, to accept process on behalf of the county.
Make a motion. Motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrow. Morrow, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Ayes have it.
Next time we have one of these, I'll say it's what we talked about before on pro se prisoner litigation.
All right.
We'll be up to speed.
Okay.
All right. Discussion of the Live Oak Subdivision ditch. Madam, Mr. Morrow, please feel free to jump in at any point. What we have is the Live Oak Subdivision. What we have is the Live Oak subdivision, this District Three, obviously Mr. Morrow's area. What you have is a subdivision development, this is a typical and regularly occurring issue for us across the county. The subdivision is developed, in this particular case, it's developed by a developer who is deceased, long since out of the picture, not able to be counseled or inquired about with respect to the condition of common areas that were retained by the developer, of which this ditch is one. It's a common area for the development, serves as a part of drainage. We have a number of public streets that are within this development that are already the county's maintenance responsibility. With those streets is drainage infrastructure. What we, what we have been seeing is that over time, this particular common area drainage structure, this ditch, which is privately owned, has been allowed to grow up, it has not had any maintenance. Since it was developed, and because the developer retained ownership of this common area, it was eventually put on the chopping block for sale for taxes. It was purchased in two separate parcels by two different entities, one of whom has now since had that tax sale reversed, and it's now a part of the ditch back in the name of the developer again. The other part of this ditch is owned by a private citizen who bought it at tax sale. We've made notifications, there has been contact made, we are moving this through the nuisance process to have the ditch cleaned, right? What we have, where we are today is that the larger segment of this ditch, by the way, this ditch composes about twenty-five acres, total acres of property, about two-thirds of it is owned by this lady, and the other third or more is on, is back in the name of the deceased developer and the entity, developer entity. So, what, the problem that we have here is that you have a ditch that is not being maintained, that is creating and causing flooding on publicly-owned infrastructure, streets, drainage, curb, gutter, and it is, it is impacting the ability to get water off of the public infrastructure. And it's allowed to pond up, folks are having trouble even getting in and out of their houses along the public street because of it, and we see this consistently in other areas of the county. Alright, so in this particular case, we have a nuisance process that is underway, I don't know that it has been set, or I'm not sure where that is in the process, but at any rate, the contact has been made about that. The suggestion is being made, or I would offer that we can, we can continue to move that nuisance process forward, and I would suggest that we do that. As a part of that process, once, once the board declares that there is a nuisance situation, in fact, a ditch that's not being properly maintained and it's affecting public infrastructure, what, what can happen at that point is you can move it up to Justice Court, which is what we do ninety-nine percent of the time, or you have another option, and that is the county can undertake to remediate, remove the nuisance, and apply the cost of that cleaning, that clear-up against the property as a lien. And you're allowed to do that under state law, by way of the nuisance statute, Code Section nineteen. And we are authorized to expend for any piece of property up to a maximum of twenty thousand dollars per year in cleanup costs. Again, it gets assessed as a lien against the property, okay?
That's probably worth.
They don't want it.
Yeah.
Did you say it's twenty-five acres?
It's worth the negative twenty thousand right now.
It's a total of twenty-five acres between two separate parcels that are this ditch within the development.
That's a lot of land.
Good bit of property that's there.
Well, we got to, I mean, you were at a meeting the other day with the same situation, basically you got a ditch that's created a problem, it's on private property, exact, similar situation. They think if that ditch was cleaned out, it would alleviate some of their problems.
I've got multiple issues in the same exact, same exact area that I've got, I've got areas where Pine Brook subdivision, for example, is in the same situation, where I get water up to mailboxes, where we had to come in, and the sheriff was gracious enough this last heavy rainstorm to bring a vehicle in just so we could get access to the back portions of the neighborhood.
Right.
So we, we've got some serious issues around.
We can't start, I mean, there's no way we can start being.
And you're putting your finger on it. The suggestion is being made to push that through the nuisance, because that is what gives you the best opportunity to have the private parties that are responsible for the maintenance actually conduct the maintenance. Now, the, the issue here is, well, it's a number of issues, for the majority of the work, you've got a deceased, and there is nothing there to go after it.
Well, I mean, they don't have, there's, there's no, I mean, they got family, was it left or something?
Well, I mean, maybe pull it by, maybe pull it a little tighter. The objective here is, is the homeowner association wants to acquire these parcels.
Yeah.
And they want to take ownership of the property. However, they want some, some kind of commitment from the county that will do at least a one-time grubbing of the ditch.
Yeah, I remember that.
So we can figure out what's there. Dave, if I'm not mistaken, Derek, I mean, we had somebody go out and look, somewhere between forty-five to forty-five, forty-eight thousand dollars, I think, to grub the ditch and leave in the northeast part in timber and tight to get it, so we just say, so we just see what's going on, you know?
What led the homeowner association to think that the county was responsible for one time?
But they, they not, I mean, but they, but they don't have the funds to clean it, nobody does, and as a result, the waters keep getting, the last three mill grains we've had, I got pictures that the streets are inundated, you know? So it's either we don't do anything, water continues to get out of the streets, we'll hopefully pay more to repair the, the streets and the curbs and gutters, as opposed to hopefully clean the property up, let the homeowner association take over ownership of that and keep it clean, so the water, the debris will stay off the streets.
Have the homeowner association bid at a tax sale to try to claim ownership?
No, sir. Not to my knowledge.
This has all kind of started this year, you know, and we brought the one owner to the lady, we notified her through the public business, we've kind of been postponing this until we kind of had a meeting of the minds, she's more than anxious to, to transfer this to the homeowner association.
Yes, she is.
And the other one, as we said, Derek, and I had Craig do a, do a work on that, there is no living person that's tied to this LLC that can sign anything, so.
Just to help, help you understand, Jared, it's typical development activities, it was done under the auspices of an LLC that was established by that developer. When the developer died, what he had, his interest was a membership interest in that LLC. That moved through his estate, and my understanding is that his heirs disclaimed any interest in his member interests of development activity. They, they walked away from all of it, and there's not a mechanism to force the heirs to take those interests, they disclaimed it, and so they are there. Eventually, I would assume that that, that section of the development that is, that is in the name of this developer will eventually eschew to the state, because it won't get sold at a tax sale.
The HOA is going to get it the next tax sale, you know, it, you know, that may be what, what happens.
Well, if we do it once, we're on the hook, you know?
Problem.
Well, not only that, yeah, if we're going to do that one, we need to address our others that.
Each one of them.
Absolutely. But what I would like is, you know, we've had a lot of heavy rainfalls recently that have caused all of our areas to flood. Can we find out, you know, get some evidence that just on light rains that this is causing problems, or, because if it's one of these, you know, three inches in thirty minutes, everybody's going to have this flash flooding problem. So I, I'd like to make sure that it is actually just light rain is going, you know, is impacting this to that extreme.
Same, right.
And also, you know, if we're going to do that, then, I know Steve's got one in his area that the department addressed, and Jared's got one, and I know Daniel's got several. I think we need to just get ready to buckle up and do something for our whole county rather than just one area, but that's just me.
Mine was so bad this last rain, that I had a subdivision that was totally cut off from access, I mean, roads impassable, and the sheriff was gracious enough to get his crew together and his new apparatus that could go through heavy standing water to get access to those people, so I've got a true issue over in the Pine Brook area that where, I mean, we get water up to the mailboxes, to where vehicles cannot pass, and I've probably got sixty to eighty homes that doesn't have access out of there, they're stuck, so.
Let me ask you this, though, in that situation, because sometimes people don't realize the flooding's here, but it's because the water can't, I mean, where, where all the waters go and everybody's water, all that's flooded, too, because everything's going to that, that situation I've seen so many times. Right, I mean, you can't help it. But in that, how fast does it run off once it quits?
Three hours, four.
Yeah, let's see, it's relatively quick, if you look at it, and Jay's right, we've had flooding, we've had culverts, one I know that they've replaced, an eighty-four inch in a place that has been there longest before me, and it blew that covert out. There's water that we've not seen, and it's the five inches and three inches, you know, in a few hours that's created so much of these problems, so.
Why don't we let this process go as a nuisance into the justice and monitor it, I mean, I'm not saying at some point on Daniel's, on Jay's, Jared's, mine, that we won't have to do something on an individual basis, but at least go through the process of, and while it's going through this news, we're, hopefully we're about out of this rainy season.
Right.
Before we get back into another rainy season, it should be through the justice, and then we can maybe have a little better feel of who is going to be the owners, too, if, I think when it goes to justice, we're going to have some people trying to give it away quickly, so they won't have to have a tax sale, they'll quit claiming to the homeowners. Well, I mean, that's going to be the, I just hate going through all this for nothing, you know?
Well, ask that, one, that to me real quick, Greg, if we, if we, if we move this particular parcel, it's about sixteen acres this lady has, what is it, what, I mean, we move it to JP and then what happens?
Yes, sir. They would actually conduct a, a trial. She would be served with notice of a nuisance violation, which is an ordinance violation, misdemeanor offense, under the nuisance section. And the justice court judge would impound a trial on that matter, and she could be found guilty of having violated the ordinance and placed under a sentence that requires her to remediate that. Or alternatively, go to jail.
Are we just addressing one of the tracks or both tracks at the same time?
At this point, Steve, we have no one to serve a nuisance notice on with respect to that part.
But the property is in violation. I mean, we have a nuisance property, but you got to have somebody sue it, JP Court.
That's right.
You got to have somebody go there.
Or we could. You've got to have a scene, you can name it, let's pay the sheriff taxes. There's nobody to pay.
My understanding is that that has been dissolved. It's dissolved.
We had to pay it.
That's what I'm saying, yeah. So, I mean, I don't want to go through all that for not. Which is kind of where we're headed. How was the gentleman able to divulge himself of the property? After he acquired it, how did he get rid of it?
Talking about the decedent?
No, the tax sale, the one that bought the tax sale.
There was some issue with, a technical issue with the actual tax sale, which required under the law for it, for that tax sale to be reversed.
Oh, okay.
Because I know in the past where people were going like out in Robin Hood, they'd go buy property out there, and there was one gentleman bought one for a deal, well, he found out he had to go tear down a building, too. You know, so, I mean, there's, it's sitting the first time somebody thought they were getting a steal and end up having to invest some money to.
Usually there's a reason why it's a deal.
Yeah, exactly. Usually. But I, I know personally in my district, I got a lot of storm drain issues, I don't have any, though, that affect the public road that we legally can fix, unlike you, and I think Steve for sure has one, I don't know if Daniel has one, but I know he's got a lot of storms. It's up to the mailboxes, it's probably in the public road.
It's affecting it.
It's going to continue to affect it, because it's just, it's going to be a matter of time, and we're going to, the, the curbs and the sidewalks that we're going to have to replace and resolve, and that's going to get really expensive, so, I mean, it is, it's a catch-22, you know?
All the reason for us to go ahead and bite the bullet and establish a storm drain district in our county to start addressing these problems. Well, Jay, you have more experience than me. When you say a storm drain district, about how many mills are these people that pay taxes looking at to address these issues county-wise? Well, we don't even know currently, we, well, first we got to establish a district, and it wouldn't really be fair for us to put a district on someone out that owns a farmland, because they don't have the same issues that people inside subdivisions do. So what I'm thinking is we, we focus on our platted subdivisions and find out how much money we're generating out of those platted subdivisions, or what money possibly could be generated out of those platted subdivisions.
Tell, your experience with looking at this on one individual subdivision was just astronomical.
Oh, yeah.
It was millions of dollars to fix one subdivision, and you were going, I mean, if you tried to spread that amongst them, they couldn't afford that either.
That's right.
Their taxes would have won up a thousand dollars a year.
Well, no, would be able to afford it, yeah, probably so. Probably so, but, you know.
It's not as easy a sale unless it's formed this district.
Right, and, and I know that we're not going to be able to address everybody's concern to take care of it, but we got to start somewhere.
But those that are not, that don't have an issue with anything, and they're where their subdivision geographically located, it's not going to be very right for them to be taxed on that either.
But just because you live in a subdivision and your neigh, your, your land is not forming sinkholes, but your property adjacent to you does, you know, you're, you're still contributing to that because there's water.
I'm not even talking about in that area, I'm talking about another subdivision that's platted.
Well, I mean, tell you, over a period of lifetime of these subdivisions, they're all going to have to have their storm drains replaced, no question. And, and that's the problem we run into, a lot of these that are, you know, thirty, forty years old now, that the life of their drainage is collapsing. And a homeowner can't afford to go out there and pay thirty thousand dollars to replace the storm drains.
And for the same side of that, when we get into these approval or updating of our standards on development subdivision, we've got, we've got to get that cleaned up immediately, before any other developments come on board. Absolutely, full gamut of it.
Well, we already started that, and actually I'm sitting here looking at some ordinances right here. But, we keep saying this, and we really have not done anything to address, but I asked Laura at our last meeting to, and I don't know if you've done it yet, but I, I would like for us at our fifteenth meeting to have discussion about this, so we can pull some numbers together and see what we're looking at and possible way of funding it, and what it would generate to start addressing some of these problems.
Okay.
Okay.
My number ought to be pretty good.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, Craig, let's just keep moving this forward and we'll have this discussion.
With justice.
Yeah, we keep moving it.
Alright, Mr. Renai can help us with that, and to be continued. Next item under my section is a discussion and potential action to approve the execution of an ambulance service contract with Pafford Emergency Medical Services, Inc. It's, now, before the board is a, a contract, a proposed contract from Pafford that has now gone through what Pafford is calling the seventh iteration. And so, we've had an opportunity to look through that and are prepared to address it and discuss it today, and potentially act on it if, if that is the prerogative of the board. So, please let me know what you would like to hear from me about it, we can start that, I think that'd be the best thing, so.
Yeah, I think it would.
Yep.
Can you go over the changes that we asked for from our previous meeting with Pafford and where we currently are with what we requested?
And I want to make sure all of you all can hear, hear everything, so, no, okay.
Probably, in terms of prioritization, the, the key consideration from the board, as stated over and over again, is that the board prefers a no subsidy contract. And so that was obviously, that, that took a lot of time, effort, and energy to make sure that there was a good understanding about that. I am satisfied in reviewing this most recent revision that, that there is no subsidy requirement contained within the contract. And so that priority item has been addressed. Another priority consideration for the board has to do with runtimes, and we've been consistent that, especially for the unincorporated areas, that we wanted to see a better runtime. that, especially for the unincorporated areas, that we wanted to see a better runtime performance than we have been seeing with our current provider. That runtime for unincorporated areas, broken down between two separate districts for purposes of measuring, is a thirty-minute max runtime at a ninety percent compliance rate. Both of those figures, both the time and the compliance rate, are better than we have in the current contract we have with our provider. The two districts are, you just, again, outside municipality, north of I-20.
Three districts.
Sir?
Three zones.
Well, I'm talking about the two specific, we, we have three zones, and two of those we've been focusing on, because there, I don't think there's ever been any question that we had the first district under control, we felt good about that. The municipalities and the reservoir area is District One, and then District Two is the unincorporated areas north of I-20 is District Two, and the unincorporated area south of I-20 is District Three. Both Districts Two and Three will have the thirty-minute runtime requirement at a ninety percent compliance rate. Okay? There's a lot of talk about the number of ambulances that would be committed to the county under the contract, those numbers remain as discussed, which are seven, with an, an absolute floor at five, a minimum of five ambulances, up to seven ambulances, for the purpose of allowing the provider to be able to stage and oversee, police, if you will, its, its staging areas, so that it is able to meet the runtime, so there's flexibility within there for the provider to be able to move buses around, to be able to handle the runtime requirements, depending on day of the week, time of the day, all those other considerations that go. It's important to note that they have asked for a cooperation, and it would have to be voluntary cooperation from the staging areas, the, the firehouses in the staging areas, where they are able to co-locate, so you would have a bus in the Florence area, that would be a staging area available to them, again, assuming that they're able to work out a cooperative agreement with respect to housing and other issues, you'll see a bus the reservoir area, and you would see a bus, help me, I'm losing Flowwood, I believe it was, but there are a number of co-location, they're eligible for co-location as long as there's voluntary agreement and cooperation on that.
Craig, I spoke with Mayor Phil Hachi this week, and he re, wanted to assure me that they would house and even have living quarters if Pafford would like to have one there, too.
Good.
Good deal.
So, we're already seeing what I think are the beginnings of a cooperative spirit out there to try to help this work as best as possible. There are exceptions for runtimes that are contained, again, we're working from a current contract with our current provider, that provides for a host of exceptions to the runtime. There has been consistent complaints about how many and how flexible those exceptions are. This contract has five exceptions that are listed, adverse or extreme weather conditions, excessive traffic events due to inbound and outbound accidents that, that impede transport, thoroughfare crossings blocked by trains, excessive response loads due to mass casualty incidents, and excessive ER wait times, and those are the recognized exceptions. Our EMS coordinator will have the ability to address requests from the provider for an exception to a runtime violation, that can be reviewed and pushed up to you guys for further review under this contract, and to my way of looking at it compared to what we are currently operating with, that seems to me to be a much better controlled exception protocol than we have. We'll see how it goes, okay? The contract is a four-year agreement with the ability, if the parties so choose, mutually agree to continue that for an additional four-year period. There is, has been a request from the provider for a calendar year review, basically and primarily focused on the transport volume that the provider is experiencing, so that they can discuss with you how the transport volume numbers are lining up with what they are anticipating at this stage. But again, there is no request for nor requirement to pay a subsidy of any kind.
Should also be, never talk about call times at that point in time, too, not just calls.
Yes, sir. It's a, it is a calendar year review of the contract, and I would expect that, that the provider would be open to any discussion about the contract in all of its forms, there may be other issues that come up, okay? Another important consideration, this came primarily from our Fire Chiefs Committee, and therefore from our volunteer and full-time departments, and that is this issue of med control. You guys are now familiar with that, because you've been forced to get familiar with that, but primarily, it, it is an issue of protocols associated with emergency response that is designed to be protective of our emergency responders, that is, they know that there is a specific framework within which they provide emergency care that meets minimum standards under medical care, and so we want, we, in, in other words, we want to be singing off the same sheet of music, and we don't want to get into a situation where one group of medical experts says that if you encounter this situation, you handle it this way, and yet another one says if you handle the, the same situation, you handle it in a different way. We want to have one way of handling it, so there was a lot of effort put into, how do we make sure that we're using a, a local group that has protocols with which our guys are familiar and comfortable? So they've committed that that med, med control, the online med control, will be under the auspices of a medical professional located in the Central Mississippi EMS districts. That was important?
Yeah.
And it's there, okay? Jay, off the top of my head?
Well, I know we also have, we mirrored what the other municipalities and counties' penalties, you know?
Yes, they're right.
So, that's in there, and.
The penalty.
We one hundred percent know about the ALS always, the nine-one-one calls, and I think we've addressed all the concerns I know of. We do know we're going to have to fund some training, so we'll have to transfer some money out of the fire fund into the EMS fund, to have some training over there, so.
I had a conversation yesterday with Keith, and, and he alluded to the fact he's working on an interlocal with AMR Keith, that's correct? Where's Keith? That's right. Do you know when that agreement's going to be executed?
Before May tenth, because we'll be going in Madison County, and we're going to have an overlap of about seven days, and AMR is going to respond to calls in Madison County while we're upstapping, and we have a general agreement now, we'll put that on paper next week, have that mutual aid agreement, it'll be, probably do that, including Rankin County also.
Is that also going to clear the buses down in Simpson County, too, to help us out in the southeast part?
Yes, sir, it would be our, our big operation in Central Mississippi, and AMR's big operation in Central Mississippi, have that mutual aid, and for disaster purposes, but also for, for overruns of ambulance, of west bedroom patients.
Craig, do you think the video recorder picked that up there, Craig?
I, I hope so.
Mr. Carter, if we vote on this today, what are we looking at on our turn-up time?
I propose June first.
June first?
Yes.
Well, that should give us adequate time to get all of our people.
Could you come to the mic, please?
You need some TV time.
There you go. Thank you. I will readdress Mr. Moore's question, we have had conversations with management at AMR, we will have a mutual aid agreement with them for Madison County, which will include Rankin County when we go active here, and we want to work together for the best of the patients. Your question?
Was, when we going to start, what's possible?
I propose June first. We, as you know, we're going to go operational May tenth in Madison County, it's a long week there, and that would also give us, we're standing up six ambulances there, plus another two or three special event ambulances during the first week, so that would bring us through the middle of May, and that stand-up would, would work out all the kinks of adding these extra three ambulances here in Rankin, should go without, without an issue. The only issue would be housing, and we've also started that process in Florence and in Flowwood and the reservoir to get that accomplished, and we feel that that's enough time to get that accomplished, to house our guys.
Well, I know that one thing that was concerned was about having time for the gentlemen who are ladies that do medicine, that they need to do some paperwork that needs to be.
That was addressed, actually, myself and Brian Mett yesterday, and that's a very, that's not a hard process, it's a medical control form, we push the protocols out, it's a signature from the medical control physician and myself, we submit that down to, to, to Jackson, that could be about a week process, that we, we could accomplish all that in about a calendar week, and then transition over. Transitioning out of what AMR has provided, we're going to use the same protocol we're using in Madison, and that's just going to be a transition of the O-two tanks and all the soft equipment is going to stay, and we'll replenish that as, as we go, there's not going to be a net changeover of having to get every volunteer's response bag, or get to every fire station to switch anything out. We've agreed that the easiest thing for patient care would be for us to transition into that and then let that move over time, so that's something myself and AMR worked out for Madison, we would replicate that for, for Rankin, so it's a good transition.
Okay.
Keith?
Yes, sir.
Don't forget, there's housing offered in Phil Hachi.
There is, and actually, we brought that up, actually, Bob and, Bob and Brian were in my office yesterday, we were looking at some, and, and between now and a year, probably even sooner.
Yeah.
I've actually talked to the Fire Chief in Brandon, if we need to move that, that second ambulance out of Brandon to Phil Hachi to meet our response times to provide a better service, we're very open to that, we can do that, and we appreciate that outreach.
Only other question I've got, why do you have to build your communications center in Madison County, why can't it be in Rankin County?
That's a great question, I'll be upfront and honest with you, because I always will. We have a strategic alliance with Global Training Institute up there, we've been doing a lot of our training up there, they were, they offer that collaboratory up in Canton, they have actually a resident that is moving out in June that did a large outbuild of a lot of technology, and when we looked at that, and our product people came in that does our entire charting and dispatch and ambulance CAD system, they looked and said this could be, I mean, we just, it was made to be a, a technology center, so we could put a dispatch center out with very, very minimal cost to switch over. So that spacing that they have up there with, with what they've offered in Madison County, you will benefit at that at no cost.
Fair enough. I guess the only thing I have to ask, and I'd like any of you out there to have any comment or any questions about anything, because you are the, you're the ones we're going to count on. Are y'all happy with what's, what you're hearing today? I'd like to hear it now, not later.
I'm Bill Warren with the Shell Road Volunteer Fire Department, and I'm a member of the committee, and reviewing their proposal on Section twenty-six, it's referring to the, and, and some other things, too, the Emergency Medical Services Operational Funds, these funds can be used for several things except for operation. Thought that was strange in the way they put the title in there, but these, I want to make sure that these aren't pass-through funds, they would be about fifty-six thousand dollars coming to the county, and under Mississippi Code fourteen fifty-nine dash five, under Emergency Medical Services, the use of these EMSOL funds, the county has to submit the application for these funds and do the purchasing, and they can loan the equipment to an ambulance company or to a fire department, but they have to maintain if this equipment is tagged as Rankin County property, those funds just can't automatically flow into a ambulance company or provider, and it seems like the wording they've got there is a little, ambiguous there. Now, the other thing is, the funds cannot be used for training first responders, but can be used for additional training, and has been done through with EOC, so if all of those funds are going to the ambulance company by way of the county, how are we going to replace the funds for additional training for our paramedics and EMTs and first responders here in the county? And then the last thing is, I didn't find anywhere in the contract that if a vendor was having problems in a certain area of the county, for instance, the northwest or the southwest part of the county, was to prevent them from subcontracting with another ambulance service to provide service in that area that might want to be addressed. But I don't want y'all to get sued on using state funds incorrectly, that was the biggest, biggest thing.
Any comment on that, Mr. Slay or anything?
Well, I'd plan to, I think the, obviously, a contract cannot contract away the legal requirements that we have under the law, so obviously, if there's some issue within the contract with respect to the EMSOF, there's enough flexibility in the contract to make sure that we do it the way that the state says we have to do it, so we'll be in compliance with state law regardless, and the contract will have to just simply flow in accordance with the law. If they're asking us to do something that violates the law, then it's not enforceable under the contract.
Right.
And so, so that issue would be resolved.
Craig, we never had, I mean, I never anticipated that anything that we would loan or they would use would even leave their county, because it was always specific that it would stay in this county.
Yeah, right. Exactly.
It'd still be us loaning it.
Yeah, and I don't think that's ever been misunderstood on the part of Pafford, I think Pafford has completely understood that, and they already know how to.
We have had equipment audits where they came back, and we've had to go out and find out, you know, locate the exact equipment, regardless of, you know, whether it's fire departments, ambulance, whatever, and identify and show what that equipment is, so, you know, just every few years, you know, I don't know how random they are, how to get picked, but we have been through the audit.
Bob, do we, do we have anything on, that we've given to AMR now through that fund that you know of?
I would have to double check, I'm sure we've got, I don't know.
Yeah, we have.
I mean, we got tons of equipment out there, on that, you know, some of it is under the threshold.
But you've, you've got, you've got a list of everything that's been purchased through that, that's in AMR's possession now that we'll return back, right?
I bet if you give Keith a copy of that list.
No, they don't, well, I mean.
I bet he could get it.
Years ago, we bought a bunch of radios, but those things are. I mean, you know, say, some of it is, like bags, we bought, you know, we bought twenty-six bags, fourteen bags, medics, different stuff like that, that's in well of the threshold, that'll count that, but, you know, some of these monitors and all are quite expensive, and that's what.
We got one back here, come on, Rob.
Scott Berry, Reservoir Fire Department, I'm not coming up to talk about the EMSOF money or the contract or any of the, the Mississippi Code, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for engaging us as Fire Chiefs and representatives of our districts to come up and voice our opinions, and share with you what we think our needs are of our citizens that we serve. I know it's been a long process, the board, prior to this board, it was a long process, but I think we, we've done, done a good job and worked really hard with you, with Craig Slay, to, to come to this, so I just want to say, as, as one of the representatives from the EMS, EMS Board, thank you, thank you for the effort y'all put into this, and I know it has been time-consuming and a lot of headaches, been there with you, but thanks again.
Yeah, thank you.
That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Rob, you, you came in a minute late.
You don't have anything to say.
I got nothing.
I'm good with it, please vote.
That's what I wanted to hear, I'm good with it, thank you, that's enough.
I've never seen Rob go so quick.
Yeah, I want to echo what Chief just said, and suggest to you that how appreciative that the, the folks on our side of the table are, the Chiefs being willing to meet, discuss, help us, and, and analyze the issues and provide invaluable input into this, and without their help, there would have been many, many things that are now in the contract that would not have been there.
Correct.
And so, I'm, I'm very appreciative of, of that. I will, I will tell you that I also appreciate the, the would-be provider and the representatives for working cooperatively with us, for listening to our side, and for making efforts as best they can to try to accommodate the requests that were made, and I think that will serve us well as we move forward. I feel like we already know these guys because of the interactions that we have had, and so my hope would be that some of the rough patches early on, we've already had. them.
Right.
So we can just move on and talk frankly with one another as we go forward and try to address the issues. Not if, but when they come up, we can address the issues that we need to address.
Mr. Bishop, I make a motion to approve the execution of the ambulance service contract.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? Can we make sure our attorney reads the contract, get all the typos out? And would you mind?
I'll make that amendment to the motion that he has out.
Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
If I may add one other item that goes in concert with the action that you've just taken. We have a current provider. We have a technical obligation under the existing contract to notify them of the action that the board has now taken. I would ask, although you've probably given it to me six times previously, I want to ask for clarification that I am in fact authorized to notify our current provider about the action taken today and give them that official start date of June 1. Do you have a problem? Give them the official date of June 1 as the handoff.
I make a motion to add that to the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Morrow to notify AMR of our end of contract, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Gaines. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hey, and I want to make one comment on that. Now, that's a closed deal. I do want to put this out, make it quick. I do want to put this out on a bit of appreciation to the people of AMR. They're good employees over there and there's some good people in the management side of that from Stan Offord to Steve Peacock and that same group of that. And I do want to thank them for their service that they've given to Rankin County over the last several years. I know circumstances have been difficult, situations has arose, but I do want to thank the professionalism of AMR.
Yeah, I agree. Every time I've ever had any issue or anything from constituent, they've been very quick to respond and address it and work things out. So I did owe that one with you.
I am very happy that we're finished. Sunday, I had a call. A man older than myself was on the phone crying because his granddaughter was unconscious and he was wanting me to tell him when the ambulance was going to be there. He'd already been waiting over the time limit. I stayed on the phone. He asked me, will you please try to fix this? And I thank every one of y'all for helping fix this.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Sure.
I just want to say thank you. We're going to do the very best job we can. These guys right here will not let me down and will not let you down. We'll get them back to the street though, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
All right.
All right. Hey, Mr. Smith, I want to thank you for showing your interest in our county.
No problem. I think that we know.
All right. Okay, moving on our agenda, next we have Ms. Lawster.
Hi. The first item I have for y'all is simply a discussion. We have had somebody approach us to see if we're interested in selling a piece of county asset, a property that we have. It's the old children's shelter.
I didn't know we owned that.
Where is it?
Right over here.
It's down behind where the livestock arena used to be, down near the human services and down there. It was the-
Ah, okay. Yeah, I know where you are.
Children's home. It's been vacant for about a year now at least that they had to disband that. And it's my understanding from Johnny that they try their best to maintain it as far as going in there, you know, to flush the toilets, to do some minor maintenance because, you know, a building that's not used will quickly go down. But we've been approached by an exchange club, see about purchasing it.
Can I give you guys a quick update on that, this information that I'm aware of? I've been working with them. So I wanted to make sure you have this information for purposes of timing.
The shelter care, the shelter, the facility itself, has been utilized by a private 501(c)(3) organization called Shelter Care for Children, Inc. That entity was begun by Mr. Jim Wright long ago and has been operating through the years, although in latter years it's really slowed down. As their board has aged, they've lost some board members, it has not functioned as it had in the past. And so it became pretty clear not too long ago to the people that were remained affiliated with that organization, that it needed to be wound up. That organization is in the process now of winding up operations and officially closing its doors. As a part of that process, they will release back to the county any rights that they may have with respect to the property under any lease agreement that's still out there. So for the purposes of timing, my suggestion would be let's let Shelter Care get finished with their process and officially tender that leasehold interest back to the county. And then the county has the ability to deal with any third party about what can happen with the facility thereafter.
We need to make sure that we don't have a use for it too.
That's why I'm bringing the discussion forward, to see if there was anything that y'all feel that the county would have need of before we entertain the idea of selling a property.
In the not-too-distant future, it will be unencumbered and back in the possession of the county.
But it's essentially what about 1,500, 1,700 square foot house?
Something like that.
I mean, somewhat limited, but yeah.
Ms. Pepitone contacted Steve and she vicious contacted me regularly.
Ma'am, I give her your number.
Yes, I got her.
She's a place, I think, Amity Court. They wanted it at one time.
Okay.
Okay, the next thing is just the review of the agendas from May 2nd. If there's any questions.
Anybody have any questions about our agenda or has anybody looked at it?
Yeah, I did look at it.
I did look at it, but I don't have a question.
Okay.
Hang on, I thought it was something like that.
Well, I hadn't looked at it, so if I got any questions, I'll call you.
Bring it up Monday.
Yeah, or bring it up Monday. That's right. Okay, is that all the business you have with us, Laura?
That's all I have. We have some additional business.
Well, yes, we do. J H is here with us?
Yes.
Would y'all like to get started? Okay, it's time to get started.
Starting to fill out the ambulance contract.
No, we've been dealing with this a lot longer than that ambulance contract.
I agree with us yet, though.
Hadn't been quite as fun.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's been a long morning. What we're here for today is to give y'all a brief update of where we're at in this process. Just to recap briefly, approximately two months ago, maybe a little bit longer, we were authorized with the board to go back, make provisions to the courthouse facility plan, which we did. And then about a month later, we presented that to you and you authorized us to go back and review that with the users, which we did that also in this process. Then we had another request to have a separate review meeting with chancellors, which we've done. So we had all our meetings and incorporated all the comments to this date. So what we want to do is kind of bring that back to this board because there have been some comments from the users. And most of it has been minor, but there are a couple of things that we need to review with you to get your approval. So that's why we're here today. And I've got my team with me to help keep me straight if possible. So let's just, we'll go through this quickly. Interrupt me at any point to ask questions because I know it's-
Yeah, you might as well leave that hole quickly and briefly out.
That's fine.
We're going to be here a little while.
We can be here all afternoon if we need to be.
No, we won't.
Which gets me out of a meeting with the Department of Labor anyhow.
We won't.
We won't, Carl. You might.
Okay, just to refresh you, we reduced the size of the facility by taking the land records out. So we're down to about 57,000 square feet now. And we, by doing that, we were able to add parking, which we've got a total of about 194 parking spaces and 141 of that is public parking. And then what you see up there, assigned staff parking is in a secure gated area. One of the comments we got in our views from both the chancery and the justice judges was the issue of security about driving through the public parking lot to get to the security area. In fact, one of the judges had just been through a seminar and said that was not a good idea, which I would tend to agree. The issue is trying to get as many parking places on the site as possible because as y'all all know, that's an issue. But what came out of that was we looked at several options and you can see up there and what's brownish reddish. We wind up adding a second drive out of the secured parking. Now, we are really pushing this and we're just in concept stage because that southwest corner is McLaurin property and that office building up there. So we're very tight there and we're going to have to have a retaining wall there. But we think we can get a one-way drive out of there, at least for the judges. And what we think is possibly the issue, you know, if you have a judge and you go through a hearing and somebody's upset, then their concern is somebody be waiting in the public parking lot for them to leave. Well, this would allow them to at least leave after that without having to go through the public parking. This is about the best we can do because of the site and all the requirements we're trying to get on here. But that's something we can do at a relatively minor cost, somewhere around $60,000, $70,000, we think, to add that drive if that's desired, to help do that.
But it could be utilized for other staff too, not-
It could be, it could be. It's just, it's a one-way deal, so, you know, if people want to leave at the same time, that's fine, but there's just not enough room to get a two-way drive into there.
Oh, is that going to require two separate gates there?
Yeah, well, it's going to require a gate at that end, at the south end. And of course, we'll have a gate at north end. So yes, we will have two gates.
No, no, I mean, the way that looks, we're going to have two separate gates.
No, no, we would just have to have one.
Okay, aye.
And we're still playing with that. It's, you can see, we're just running out of space.
Yeah.
And conceptually, it works. When we start getting busters people involved, we've already got them involved to some extent, but we're going to have to look at that to make sure that will work and we've got enough room to get actually to do that. Because it all, from top to bottom, it slopes 40 feet across the site. And that's why we're having these retaining walls. One approach that we think we're doing this time is a bit different from the previous. We think, and during our study and talking to retaining wall contractors, we think this is going to save money. We've shortened the retaining walls by having more retaining walls at a less height instead of one big one. Like along the back, we'll have like an eight-foot retaining wall, then we'll have a slope and then we have a five-foot retaining wall as opposed to one big one that would be 12, 13, 14 feet across the back. And the reason why that saves money potentially is because we can use a different type. We don't have to use a cord-in-place retaining wall. We can use what's called a reticular or stone that stepped on top of each other. Those are generally much less expensive than having a cord ones.
Just like what we did on O'Fenner Road?
Yes, yeah, very similar. And really, most of those are about that height, five, six feet. It's less labor intensive, less material. Even though you have more retaining walls, you have, basically, the people we've talked to and our experience indicates it's less money because they're smaller and they don't need all the additional concrete reinforcement. Now, if you remember, what we did on this scheme, we created a drive-thru on the west side for the Sally Port. So the sheriff can come in behind the secure gate and come in where you see the word "bridge", underneath there is the Sally Port, and then he can go straight out so he doesn't have to back out. And that's the idea. We think it's, we don't have to build an enclosed facility, although we'll have enclosed gates. But we think that's going to be less costly also and then you don't have to back out. Now, because of the levels, where you see the assigned staff, on top of that Sally Port, there's a bridge where they just walk into the level of the chancery, which is at the upper level, and the justice is down at the lower level.
Are you talking about the staff can walk across the top?
Right, the staff and the judges, right. And there'll be stairs that they can go down. Essentially, and you'll see on the floor plans, the justice is on the lower level, chancery's on the upper level. And that was a desire from everybody involved to separate these two functions as much as possible. It worked with the site. What we're trying to do to save money is balance the dirt work on the site. So what we're looking at is up at the top part, the west side, we're looking at cutting dirt, bringing it down, putting it pretty much where the building is and so that the cost in site work, some of the major costs, is hauling dirt off and bringing dirt in. So we're trying to eliminate that as much as possible. Now, that all assumes, and our soil tests pretty much confirm this right now, that the dirt on site is not bad clay that we can't use. So, you know, and that's why the building is located basically from north to south in a design too, because it follows the contours and it saves on grading, at least that's the concept. And it makes sense. It's similar to what we had before. So that's pretty much the public entrance right now in this scheme is just showing one entrance. One of the comments we had specifically from the chancellors, that they wanted a second separate entrance or two separate entrances, one for the chancery, one for the justice. We studied that. That took us a couple extra weeks to study. We think we've got that resolved at minimal cost, but I'll, let me run that through you. What you see right now is this one scheme is one entrance down at the bottom. And the reason for that is so we can have one security checkpoint position with all your metal detectors and everybody comes through that one area and then they're dispersed. On the lower level, all this that you see is justice and the greenish color is the public areas. And then the other colors are secure areas that would not be, cannot be accessed by the public unless so brought in by somebody. They would be card keyed access areas. So what you have is that one central entrance, you come in the vest build and you go straight into the justice. Now, to go to the chancery, which is up at the other level, you have to go to the left and take a stairs or the elevators. So there is no chancery function currently on the lower level. The chancery courts and the chancery clerk are all up on upper levels. There was concern expressed by the chancellors that this was still not enough separation because everybody's coming in one entrance. They asked us about looking at studying a second entrance, which I'll show you in a minute. But in this plan, you can see the two, we've got still two courtrooms. Now, we've got a large courtroom on the left that seats about 150, small one on the right seats about half that. The one on the left would have a jury box, it's hard to read in this slide, but it's got it in there and jury deliberation. The Sally Port, you can see up at the top, would come through there, that's the security entrance that'd come in, then bring them back to the holding cells to the right there that are more central. And the holding cells are located so they can serve both courtrooms. And again, that's all in a secured area. We do have it similar design as last time. We have a security room in that area that has views into the male holding and the female. And also, there's what we call an inmate testifier area so that depending on the judge or the situation, they don't ever have to get into the courtroom unless it's a legal requirement to do so. But this is something that's been used in other facilities successfully. Going down to the corridor, you have all the-
Say, can you say that one more time?
Well, what you have. Come in, Daniel, this is the Sally Port. Come in and there's no, this is all support spaces with no rooms in here, they bring them into this, to this holding cell area. You have a male holding cell there, you have the security officer right there, female there. And then this is what's called an inmate testify. They would have glass here so that if desired, you could just take prisoners into this area here, never having to get into the courtroom to testify.
Oh.
Now, we've, there are several judges that like this, some judges don't think that's appropriate, they need to be in courtroom. But that's-
You have an option.
Well, I mean, that is in the courtroom, you're just behind the glass, huh?
Behind the glass. And the idea is to keep, you know, not having to bring them in there. But that's something I think Florence has it or Richland, which one has it down there?
Richland, probably.
Richland has it. We went down there and looked at it, it works, in our opinion, works well. Plus, probably what's going to happen at some point too, at some point, some of these courts, especially Justice Court, there'll probably be videotaping. I'm not even sure at some point if prisoners would have to be brought over here in the future, but that's-
We are going to build in that-
We're going to build in the conduit to have that available. And then, of course, they'll have to go back to the sheriffs. So that'll be, you know, it won't be wired right now to do that unless y'all-
Why wouldn't we?
Well, again-
I mean, if we know in the future, we're probably going to do it, why not go and wire it up front? It'd be cheaper, wouldn't it? To do it now than later.
Yeah, we can wire it in this building, you just have to run back to the sheriffs. You don't have to have a place to-
The specifications may change and what the wiring and stuff like that.
Yeah, what we typically do anyhow- Yeah, what we typically do anyhow, in this building package, it's just the conduit and the wiring generally will be provided by the county, that the county, because there are cheap people, they're not rusty, that's usually pulled, and because this stuff changes, as you said, so rapidly, it's just, it's better to do it...
When do you start to do it? When do you wanna initiate, then you go ahead and...
The technology changes before we can even finish designing everything.
The specifications change on all this stuff. If we're looking at two years, three years, four years, this'll probably change, you go ahead and put the wire, they're gonna have to pull them out, you won't be...
The technology will be better than it is right now, and probably less expensive, is what we typically try to do. And then, the justice's court judges are here, they're all on the west side, and then on this end is county prosecutor, he has his own separate entrance, as was requested. How this works is they'll buzz them in, and his assistants right there got a glass wall, and then they'll buzz them through here. Generally, they'll have, their clientele's mostly attorneys anyhow, but he, they requested a separate entrance, so that they don't have to always figure out how to get them, walk them through all this back here. So, that's, and there'll be parking here that they can use. The justice clerk area being here, this fines area here, we've got two little areas, one for civil, one for criminal fines, because that's how they're set up. They'll have cubicles in here, and then they'll have two offices there, but it's on this end of the building. Now, the second option, provide a second entrance, this would be the second, down on this end, we've created a second entrance for the justice court, and so what we have here is a separate set of doors, and of course, what this will require would be an additional security officer.
Location.
To do that. So, you'll have not only security here, but security of chancellors. And these people, they can go out of the building, but they'll never be able to come back in this area and go up to the chancellors. Now, we did look at another design that could increase this lobby area quite significantly. We could do that, it's probably about a half million dollars cost to do that, so we just decided that what we would do is create a more minor entrance. This is really almost minimal, or no additional cost, and so what we're thinking is we can queue them in this car, and then the court just can check them in right there, and then they can go down to each courtroom. Now, we will have signage, some type of electronic signage on both floors to let them know which courtrooms is which. The other thing we did look at, as I said, is bringing this out, a module here, which created a lobby similar size here.
So, if somebody accidentally, if we were to do a second entrance, you're saying if they accidentally went in the justice court entrance, they wouldn't be able to get to the chancery?
No, they have to come back...
They'd have to go back outside.
That's the way it's set up right now. Otherwise, you know, we can, we'll stay with the one entrance, because we felt like that was a good separation design anyhow, but there is concern about even, you still got both people going to both courts coming to the one central area, so that was a concern. And we were able, I think, to solve it fairly economically. This is a blow up of that area. This is the top one, it's the one entrance, this is two entrances. And see, all we're really doing is adding a pair of doors here, some doors here, and we're gonna look at this and maybe open it up a little bit more. But in the cost of things, you wouldn't notice from a cost standpoint, this is not really adding...
Well, as far as construction goes, what we had realized around there...
You're right.
Other costs.
There are additional personnel, possibly additional metal detectors.
What was the determinant factor that made the chancery lobby so much larger? Is it that many more people that go through chancery than justice?
Well, we haven't really gone back and looked at decreasing the size of that, but they do, there is a potential to have that, and we can look at downsizing a little bit, Steve. It's the same size as it was when we had just one entrance. So, that's something, right now, they do have a problem, of course, they have a much smaller facility, but we're trying to give enough room where people come in, you know, for family issues, divorces, where they don't have to squeeze in the same area, they got, even though it is one lobby, we're trying to give them elbow rooms so that they don't... But we need to go back and look at overall size of that and see if this works.
Would there be an occasion that we would ask somebody to sit down out there?
Well, this is all bottom floor here.
Yeah, no, I know.
I mean, saying a lobby, like, we don't...
Well, it's really an entry.
Yeah.
No, it shouldn't be.
Okay.
I wouldn't think. And there are some things about, we've gotta create possibly some gun lockers and things like that, spaces for that, but that's really gonna be a blow up. But that's something that we can look at, if we can save on this, say, decrease the size. It is decreased a little bit, but we can look at that, if we can decrease the size of that some more.
Right there, you see, is that a door going into where people would pay fines? Is that gonna actually be a physical door there?
Right here.
Yeah.
We got a right-hand door, it can be opened, but what we're looking at, what they requested is that this be all enclosed glass counter, and more like a bank, and then have a tray underneath it, and so it can be a door, it doesn't have to be a door.
I don't know why it'd need to be a door, it'd be like it'd be safer without a door.
Yeah, I mean, if it's, I don't know why we'd want a door there.
That's before they go through security also, huh?
Yeah, that is before they go through security.
No.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, this, see, security's down here, so we, that's one reason...
That's after they go through security, no.
Uh-oh, not on the second entrance.
Not on the second entrance.
Wait a minute, I thought, oh, so you're not gonna have it at the door itself?
There's not enough room unless we, we had that scheme where we brought it out in here and had security right there. But by the time we increase that space, we're talking about almost two thousand square feet, and that's...
Jeez.
Yeah.
Oh. What, you said so that was gonna be bulletproof and glass?
Well, we can make that bulletproof glass, yes.
So, it wouldn't matter if it's secured or not then?
It's less, it would be less expensive to make this, much less expensive to make this bulletproof glass and create a bigger entry out here. Whether it be two thousand square feet or another thousand square feet, it would be, it is, you know, it's gonna be, whatever we do out here, it's gonna be several hundred thousand dollars if we increase the size of this, just because of the square footage, you know, assuming that this ain't costing... And I say that, I'm using three hundred dollars a square foot figures across the board. Some of these spaces are gonna cost less than that, some of them could cost more, but just using that is for the budget.
Well, can we go ahead and decide which way we wanna go so we quit kicking this can down the road, and at least let's get started one way or the other?
I'm good with the two entrances.
Brian, how's that gonna affect you with security?
I think each is gonna double your security.
One or two more people?
Just like we're all right there, we won't say anything.
And that was one of the driving forces for the reason...
Right. Well, the, and also they're gonna have to have another metal detector. Everything's gonna be just double.
It's the same, exact same way we have it right now. And ultimately, what that is, if you had to get prison file days, or the court shut down, the court shuts down, you have the one entrance, one or two meetings, run a whole deal with the state.
Personally, I don't see a problem with one entrance. I never have. And the different users that use it, I mean, attorneys that I've, some that I've talked to, they're like, I don't have no problem from what I'm concerned. I mean, so...
I said, if you give it two entrance, we'll just keep the sign set up for you right now on two separate entrances.
Brian, are we looking at, how many officers do you think we're gonna need, period? Aside from the entrances, I mean, are we gonna need, how many officers do you have to have over there?
Definitely minimum of one at each entrance. Just run the, they can check everybody. A court day's gonna have, you know, productivity for them, with the volume of people coming in. Especially if they have a baby bump and forth, and they have extra deputy and active security or a chancer going out, but walk hall, you check the court, you have a baby at each courtroom, it's exactly, you know, and, I'm sorry, I'm saying at least two, but each security check.
So, rather than adding two, we're gonna maintain where we are, where we could actually save some personnel?
Yeah, four or five, I say, if they get slow up there, as I say right now, if they have all the court going in the chancery, I say, you get two courtrooms going, there's two babies, you have two people, or one person, another deck, there's another one walking the halls.
Yeah, that's right.
And if the court's open, they don't have court going on, then I'll leave two people up there, and the other two I take out for the court, so I can probably do something This is gonna stay the same way you have.
Yeah.
Just because we're in two separate locations now.
Right. Yeah. Well, personally, I like the one entrance aspect of it, which is what you wanted originally. I mean, you asked for us to do this so that it would make it a more secure building.
My thing is probably better, everybody's gonna be searching, I'm doing, see, I have one man sitting out there watching the metal detectors, checking, you know, if somebody gets scared, they, you know, check, get everybody in the building.
Carl?
I just have a question. If it's two entrances like that, two separate ones, and you don't push the building out, is that one corridor big enough to handle the block of justice court people coming in and coming down?
That was my concern too.
It's gonna be ten-foot wide corridor, it's hard to get the scale of it, it's, I think it wouldn't be, it's not, I think it would be enough. I mean, it's, the concern we had here was queuing, but I've been a couple of times there. I went on Monday morning when the courtroom was full, and I didn't get there earlier than eight o'clock. But what they do, they come in, justice has got everybody's name on here, they just shoot, they tell their names, she checks them off, so they, then they move directly into the courtroom, it's been processed, eyewitness, and I don't know if this... But that was a concern originally when we were looking at this bigger lobby here, to have more queuing space and have security out here. And that's still a viable option, it was just a cost issue to us, we just didn't, you know, it was just, I know we're trying to go the opposite way on cost and not increase it all, so, I think this would work. It moves pretty quickly, it's been our experience, but we have not got back under you this with justice courts.
Pleasure. I see what you're saying, 'cause on court day, that's gonna back up people in that little corridor right there.
Even though it's a wide corridor.
That ten-foot corridor.
Well, that's, yeah, that's probably sixty feet, ten by sixty, so, but anyhow, that's, it, I mean, that's something needs to be looked at a little bit more in detail, but I, again, we can expand that, we're trying to add, add the space to this.
Well, I mean, we, we just need to decide we want one or two.
As I said, I'm good with two.
Yeah.
I vote for one. Like originally, we've been kicking this horse, kicking this horse, he's not getting up.
I'm good with two. I think it needs to be split.
Well, I will, let me just make this comment, and I, you know, it doesn't really matter to us, we always, we start with the one, but I know in talking with the chancellors, they were pretty happy with everything, but they were, the two entrances thing was pretty much a very grave concern for them. And I'm, yes, y'all's decision, I'm just relaying since y'all weren't...
But they really could give a real valid reason, otherwise they didn't want the people together, and they don't stand together.
Well, that's, the only other, the thing that was expressed to me was, since they have so many family issues, they were concerned about small children, that mixing with...
I heard the same thing.
And I'm, again, whatever the boys are, we certainly will pursue one way or the other. I have no dog in that hunt, I'll do whatever. If you wanna think about it, we can go...
Well, it's a couple things too.
Let's go do this.
Another reason is, is you're gonna be, I mean, you're not, it's not a one-time dollar figure, it's from now on with a different, additional security, staff.
It's not additional security, it's the same security we got today.
Yeah.
It's the same numbers.
I know, I know, but I mean, we can save, we can save here, and just like Brian said, it would be safe.
We've already made the big saving, we got rid of land records, we brought, we kept them up here, you know.
From now on, you gotta, we're cutting them floors, some, cutting it down some, and it's like Sheriff said, it's easier flow to be...
I was a favorite of taking JP down to Marquette, but I got shot down on the other end.
Well, heck, I just say we leave him in the old courthouse.
And, that is on the record, right, I mean, Judge surely can't see this or whatever.
We also wanted a juvenile down at Marquette.
I'll take care of Brandon if y'all let him leave down there.
That ain't happening, man.
Hi, Steve O., what are you thinking, man?
You're up.
I, you know, man, we started, there was a reason why we started one, and I understand we have some pushback on that, and I understand why, but I think it makes sense to go with the one. I think the two, if we do that, it probably, you know, it's not gonna cost us any more money up front, but we are gonna have a, I think, an issue as is there, 'cause the entrance is literally right there beside where the, you go right to the left, I think that's gonna be a congregation, you know, get congested there on court day. How many people come to court on court day?
Well, when I went, the existing courtroom was full, I believe it holds a hundred and fifty, and they had, they had, you know, attorneys and everybody else out in the hall, kept going back and forth, but as I said, when I went, it wasn't, it wasn't backed up getting into those things. I got there about eight o'clock, I don't know what time they start seeing them in.
Well, I guess once they get through those doors, they can mill around on further out in that hall then.
Right, and generally, they go into the courtroom, 'cause, you know, they, there's one right after another, and if somebody's not there, then they call the next person. They sit, you know, at least that would've been my, that's been my two times I've been there.
So, I guess the congestion would really be just getting in, 'cause there's...
It would be, it would be the initial checking in would be, that, you know.
Let me offer this little bit of conversation before the vote is, and I have met with Judge Grant, and he is of the opinion that he does have some leverage with this court order that's still out there. It may not be to the point of saying who or what you can be, you can roll your eyes, but he's of the opinion, you know, and he can make this a very uncomfortable and very unpleasant situation for us. We have come a long way to where we are, and we're very close to coming up with a plan that everybody can live with. But, y'all vote the way you wanna vote, I'm in favor of the second entrance. Yeah, we...
All right, you put it on form of motion.
I make a motion that we go with the plan as presented, that as was called, is showing us the two entrances, one for chancery and one for JP Court.
All right, we got a motion by Mr. Marr for two entrances, second by Mr. Cross, any discussion? On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
All right. We got a motion for one entrance, I make the motion to, we have one entrance to our court building.
I second it.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Morrison, any discussion? On my favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, nay?
Nay.
Two nays, three ayes. So, we're going one entrance. Next item.
Going up to the second floor, which is the chancellors. You see, based on your vote, let me get reoriented here, come up to the lobby, this is Larry's chancery clerk suite right in here, you come in, public lobby, this is their administrative area, again, cubicles, I think they have, I think we'll go up to, I think they have four now, I think we're gonna be able to accommodate six or seven in there. This is the commit office, which has to be close to this area. Larry's assistant is here, so if they don't, if they don't need to come in here, they can come directly in here, she'll check them in, that's Larry's office. Court records is back here. Chief Deppy's office is here, which he can oversee the area, and then current records is there, and then seal records is back there. Come off the elevator, go to the right, there's four chancery courtrooms, one large one and three, all of the same, these accommodate approximately fifty, this accommodates about seventy-five, if I'm not mistaken, or eighty, which they had requested, when they have annexation or some other hearings, is the only time they would need that many, but that's, that's a large courtroom. We, by this plan, if you remember the original plan, we had one at each corner, this is a much more efficient, we've got the same corridor up above, and we were able to save space here. The judges' suites are all back here, and we, by having this plan, we now have ramps that can go up to each judge's platform, so we eliminate the possibility of having to have a lift. I don't know if you remember, especially in the new board... I don't know if you remember, especially the new board members, ADA requires us to have at least one courtroom accessible, and the other ones all have to be capable of being changed. Which, these lifts are sixty, seventy thousand dollars, which is, these ramps now, we eliminated that possibility, so they'll always have a ramp, and they'll come into the judge's bench, and then, uh-
What about the, uh, I don't guess defendant's not the right word, but someone's gotta testify, witness?
It's gonna be on the floor, uh, this will be the witness, uh, we talked to the judges about this, they were okay, everything else is gonna be on the floor. I mean, if we can write, you know, traditionally in courtrooms and in TV shows, all these places are raised, that's not a problem, but to meet ADA requirements, it just gets awfully expensive to handle that, so. I mean, they would prefer them to be raised, but, uh, they, we explained to them the cost issues involved in doing that, and they were okay with them being on the floor.
So they're fine with the layout?
Yes, actually, they gave us a layout, which we're not showing here, that we're gonna, we, uh, on how they want, where they want the witness, where they want the court reporters and the bailiff and the, uh, judges, so we, we just haven't, uh, shown that on these drawings. Since they, we'd all have these drawings when they gave it to us, court reporters' offices are all right in here, uh, this one for each judge, four judges, and of course, the court administrator. The judges also had requested at a time a separate conference rooms to have their variety, what, what do you call that? Yeah, okay, thank you, but what we thought was, uh, could save some money and actually work better for them, we just increased the sizes of their chambers, so they can have a little, a conference table right there that seats four to six people, instead of building separate conference rooms. We do all, and I forgot to say this on the other one, but we do have, uh, witness rooms for attorneys to meet with their clients, and in the children's waiting area, we have expanded three fold, and what we would envision here is about six separate little areas with low walls. It, it was expressed to us that there's a problem with putting all these people in the same area, trying to keep families separated, so, and then Larry suggested that we have a separate little room with glass walls for children. So that they can be in there without having to get mixed up with other family issues, so we're still refining that, but basically, that's what you see there. Public access is here down to the stair below on this end, but at this end, it's at grade level, and again, these are only egress, getting out. You have to still come through the first floor lobby area and come on up the stairs, this is just showing a larger scale of Larry's, Larry's space, kinda explains it a little bit better. And then the courtrooms. Then, what we started doing is looking at how we can save money on, uh, the exterior, and we talked about this a little bit before, at the same time, have it, give it an identity for Rankin County, have it civic minded. So this is just some, some examples of some studies we did, but basically, what we came to conclusion, traditional buildings such as the Capitol, you see what we call punch windows. Well, that's what we had on original design, and that's fine, that's what we see, but we can save money by going to what is called curtain wall windows. And the reason why we think we can save money there, not saving any materials, materials may actually cost a little bit more, but it's, it's saving in labor. It's also saving in where you can potentially have leaks, when you do a punch window, you have to flash around all four sides, and you have to flash around all four sides of these, these larger windows, but you don't have as many of them to flash, and, you know, if you got a good designer, that's, that shouldn't be a problem, it's not the design, it's getting it built. So having looked at these, we, we're looking up, we were looking at some different examples of what we needed to do, and this is kinda what we looked at. Rhythm and repetition, that saves money, anytime you can repeat the elements, it saves money proportion and scale, we think, in material selection, and so, all that leads to the cost considerations, and that's kinda was our driving effort. Along with trying to make something that would work for the county, so this is kinda our initial concept designs we're looking at, we have not finalized colors or materials, but you can see what we're doing, this is from, uh, north, this is from the corner of Timberline and North looking back, single entrance. Let me go back. That's, that's just a different, like, a lighter buff color thing, uh, we don't, we're looking at some kind of masonry or stone for the entrances, but again, we're trying to provide a judicial look to it, this is from the other angle. Now, this is showing the, uh, justice entrance down here, so that would probably redesign that and come down here to the main entrance. That's just a little bit different version of it. This is the side facing west, and what we've done here, again, which you, I'm not sure it's clear, but this is all glass back here, and again, the reason for that is, we feel like it's gonna save money, uh, it's gonna shorten the construction time, but since it faces west, we had two considerations, we've got a transparent screen here that shades the sun. And also, there was some concern, we think it will help provide additional security for all the judges, so that you cannot be standing at the back and looking into their offices. That's another. Another color scheme, this is the back drive where the, uh, and again, you can kinda see now the screen there, and that's going into the justice, up where I'm standing would be the Sallyport, but you can see what we're dealing with, so we've got two shorter walls instead of one. And then the sheriff would drive through here, get to Sallyport, put the doors down, and then drive on back up, get out. Just another, another view of some of that. Uh, if you're gonna fly around, now, one thing you may think, this, well, let me go back to that, this roof here, it's not flat, uh, we've got diagram that shows that, it actually slopes from there to there, it's not a high pitched roof in this scheme.
How much slope you're talking about, that must be very much.
Well, probably, uh, quarter inch of foot, so probably two, three feet over.
So it's basically flat?
No, not, not for the roof, it, it, it actually, you can go down less than that, but it would be, I'll show you, it's a pretty, over this from front to back is about three feet.
Oh, yeah, I guess quarter, yeah, cause your height wide.
Yeah, about three foot of slope.
Yeah.
The other thing that we're talking about doing, cause, and we know this has been expressed to us, we're talking about not putting any mechanical equipment on the roof, in our previous scheme, we had that. The reason why we had it in the previous scheme, uh, because the mechanical system that goes on the roof is initially less expensive, it's a package unit, somewhere in the range of three hundred thousand dollars. But, we're looking at, because of the concerns, and which is a valid concern, anytime you put stuff on the roof, there's a potential for leaking.
Well, we definitely experienced that with our most recent building, and we've had time after time troubles, and a lot of money we've spent because of that.
Well, that, let me talk about, just briefly, deviate a little bit, we're looking at a chiller system as opposed to package system, they're both good systems.
Right.
Initial cost for the chiller is about three hundred thousand dollars more, now, the chiller will last twenty to thirty years, the package system will last ten to fifteen, so you're looking at potentially twice the life expectancy out of the chiller. They pay back on the chiller, in about fifteen years, you, you recoup that three hundred thousand dollars, because the chiller is more efficient in operating and utility bills. But you do need a service contract typically, most places don't have own, uh, in-house staff that can service it, where with the package system, it's pretty much can be serviced. But the driving force in this was to keep things off the roof, especially if we go to another scheme that may have a high pitched roof, which I'll show you in a minute. Just taking you around the site and, uh, just showing you.
So what is that on the back, or are you gonna come to that later?
This?
Yes.
That's the screen, and we're gonna take that, we're gonna look at designing it as an alternate, because it's, it's probably a couple of hundred thousand dollars, we think it solves the issue, uh, several issues, but we're just gonna, we're gonna, in other words, if it's too expensive, we'll cut, we won't-
What's the purpose of the screen, I guess?
Well, because this is facing west, due west, and you got all this glass, we're trying to prevent the heat gain, and the other thing was, because these are all the judges' offices, to keep visual security.
Oh, yeah, we need the screen.
Now, you can get, we're not looking at, you can get this in ballistic material, but we don't think that's-
We can tell it's ballistic.
But you can see the second entrance coming out of here, uh. Yeah. Well, I did click. Well, I got that on a separate thing.
The second entrance would be the only, only for the second level, is that right?
Yes, sir.
You would not have a second exit for ground level?
Uh, no, they can get in on the second level, and there'll be an elevator that goes straight down to the ground if they need to go-
No, no, I'm talking about driving a car out, exiting.
Oh, yes, yes, no, sir, it's just a-
The judges on the, justice wouldn't have an exit outside the parking lot like the ones of Chantry?
Yeah, they, they would, they, because everybody, let's see if I can get a better view of that, yeah, every, everybody's, this, this whole lot's a secure parking area, it slopes, uh, Steve, the site slopes from here down there, so this is, this is the higher part. But the, but anybody, any of the staff could actually drive out of this, unless y'all-
I was thinking this was a double deck, that's the fact, parking and the Chantry would be on top and Justice on bottom.
Uh, no, because, well, I mean, this site lends itself to that, but that's more like a parking level garage.
Yeah.
And the cost difference between that and a surface parking space is about twenty thousand dollars of space.
Well, that's what you were talking about, the bridge that-
The bridge, yeah, this level comes in straight, the, the second floor level is straight off that bridge, and then from here down slopes, slopes about ten feet, and then slopes even more, because it's about-
Won't be water standing on it.
That bottom down there, uh, so I guess if Justice Court personnel, is that bottom entrance, does that go right into Justice Court?
Yeah, yeah, and see, there's a stair right here, and it's not showing up really good, but they can come in the elevator and go down and go there, but there'll be a couple of stairs right there, but we're gonna have a stair right across from there, but if, it, which most people will use, I mean, the other option is, we can put an elevator down here, again, we just, uh, just a cost issue.
Yeah, we're good.
Well, I mean, I, we're, we're very sensitive to cost, uh, because of, uh, last time, but, but we're trying, but now, you're talking about a hundred thousand dollars or so for another elevator, so, I mean, if function wise, an elevator needs to go there, and we're talking about somewhere between seventeen and eighteen million dollars construction cost total. So, you know, so a hundred thousand dollars of that is, I mean, it's a hundred thousand dollars, but it's still, it's less than one percent or so of total cost. If that, if that's an issue, now, we, we reviewed this with, with the Justice Court people, and they didn't seem at the time to have an issue.
I don't know, I mean, we already have an elevator on up the hall, right?
Right.
Well, why would we need another?
Well, you know, you have an elevator there.
Yeah.
If the, if the judge is parking this little particular area, and we can, we can move these islands around, and then come straight in and go down, and then the staff can just take the stairs and go there, if that's, if that's what's needed.
Well, I mean, I'm fine with them taking the elevator if they so desire.
Yeah, anybody can take that, that's right, anybody can take that, uh, and we can go back to that plan, but you can see, this is one gate here, this is what we're trying to do. And then there would be a Sallyport gate here.
So we are gonna have two gates?
I guess so, I guess you're right, you're right, I stand corrected. But, uh-
So we'll have a drive in just for our, I guess, the van to come drop off prisoners, and they gonna park underneath that bridge?
Yeah, the idea is, uh, it'd just work better this way, uh, on this plan, we could, we could, we could, let's see here, we could, uh, you know, I guess what we could do, it, it's just so steep on this site, this is about a fifteen foot drop here, so we'll have drains and stuff.
Wow, that's a pretty big incline.
We could have, you know, the, we could have this where they drive in and have to back out, that's not a good situation.
No, 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 yeah.
So we, we felt like it's better just to come in here, stop, put the gates down, and then just drive on out like that.
So where is the, um, I guess the generator and all the HVAC stuff, where is all that?
Well, it's not on here, we got it on the site plan, I can go back to that in a minute, but it's gonna be, we're gonna put a screen wall here, and it's gonna be right here, I think, right in this area seems to be the best thing. We've looked, we've looked at how this is gonna be done, that was another reason why originally we were looking on rooftop units. Uh, we'll lose about four or five parking spaces, but this is a blank wall anyhow, this is too, if we didn't have the drive through, we would put it back here, cause it would be down the hill, but-
So what you're saying, for us to get the units off the roof is gonna cost us three hundred thousand?
Initially.
Upfront cost.
That's right, now, a lot, life savings cost is gonna wash, either you're gonna come out ahead because of the efficiency of the chiller, but it's gonna take fifteen years to realize those savings. I mean, these are preliminary numbers I got from my engineer, so, I mean, he hadn't run all the loads.
Well, most time, they're a little more efficient too, aren't they?
Yes, they're very mu-
And you, uh, and you're gonna eliminate any roof issues?
That's the idea, that's the idea, I mean, you'll still have plumbing vents, but plumbing vents aren't generally a cause, they're small, they're not like, what happens when you put this stuff on the roof? In theory, you build up curves, and it's all flashing, it doesn't leak, it's just, it just, things happen, it doesn't get constructed correctly.
Oh, yeah, and you have holes in the, in the building.
Well, you have holes in the building, and then you gotta get up to the roof to service it, anytime anybody gets on the roof.
And if you have to have a, uh, replacement, a building that size, you're gonna have to have a crane.
Yeah.
Set the unit.
But you probably would, in fairness, you probably have a crane here, but you wouldn't have to reach over the roof.
Right, right, but I mean, you would, but I mean, you wouldn't have to have a large crane.
No.
It's because of the reach, you're talking about six, eighty ton cranes, it's because of the reach.
Yes, you're right, you're right, it's, it's-
I think we're all good.
I got a quick question, any way to move all that to the north wall as opposed to the south wall?
Uh.
Why is that?
I, I, I don't know.
The public street there on the south wall.
Are you talking about the equipment?
Yeah.
And all the equipment, just move it to the-
We can look at that, I, yeah, uh, I think the reason why we did there, we had a, let me look and see, we had a blank wall, we got, uh, we could probably do that, we could probably, somewhere in this area-
You've got something around it though.
Yeah, we were gonna put a screen, a brick-
Right.
Screen wall around it, but-
Yeah, you could move it, that's- Just move it, if you could.
As long as accessibility is still good too, I don't see why it wouldn't be.
Well, we can act, to be honest with you, we can actually put this stuff just about anywhere, it doesn't have to be next to the building, but what we're trying to do is not lose too many parking places, we could come in here, for instance. Uh, and, right, we can take and put, put, maybe put it right there, we could come in here and put it right back here, it can go underground plumbing, that's not a problem, we're just trying to look at, uh, I think we, we'll look down here and see if there's room to put, you know, right there is a pretty good amount of space, we might can put it right there.
Okay.
The other thing we were trying to do is, you know, a chiller does have some noise, so right down here, it was, this is court records, whereas this is gonna be outside of the prosecutors, and maybe Richard Dunn, you know, I'll, I'll talk to Richard.
He's fine, he don't have to talk much.
Now, you know he lives across the street, I mean, and you know he carries, you know he carries a weapon, don't you?
Let's get the roof deal done.
Yeah, 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 whenever we get it finished, he's not, he's got nothing.
Yeah, okay, this is just-
He's gonna show us the picture.
Well, I'm glad to know you got some fall in the roof, I was concerned about that.
Well, I, I know, I'm, we are too, to be honest, I mean, you know, we, the last thing we wanna do, because we get called out here before anybody else, is we gotta leave.
Well, and I know our last building that you showed us, it showed all the water going on the exterior of the building, and that's part of our problem we have now, is where the interior, the flashing is leaked, or either the pipe rusted out, and we've got flooding in our building, so how are you gonna keep from that happening?
Okay, all this, the reason why we're sloping it this way is because the drainage is not gonna be collected out here, but this little part of the roof here is actually outside of the building, is, is like six feet from here to the building. That's where we're gonna collect it right there, and, and then we're gonna bring them down these, these columns, if it was to have any issues, it's not gonna leak inside the building, it's gonna leak outside the building now.
That's great.
If you got a good architect, supposedly.
Well, I'm thinking we do, don't we?
Well, we can, we can make, you know, we can design it so it won't leak, that's not a problem, our deal is staying on top of it, and what we would propose to do on this project, which we do on most of our projects, is have a roof consultant out there when they're putting this flashing and this stuff in there. Because what happens is, if we're coming out once a week, and you may know this, Jared being, you know, they can cover up a lot of stuff in six, five days before we can see, and that happened on a project we had in Madison County, the Derek County administration built. You know, we get out there, we look, everything looks fine, we get out there- You know, we get out there, we look, everything looks fine, we get out there a week before and they got a whole side of a building bricked up. Well, it started having issues and when we got back and did forensic investigation throughout brick, well, they left out half the flashing. But, you know, what that, what we had seen beforehand was fine. So, to correct that problem, we intend to have a, an allowance in there to have somebody on site full time while they're putting in the flashing on the roof, so they, and videoing it.
Okay.
That's, you know, and that's not a hundred percent guarantee, and, and it's not that people are trying to do bad, what we find is people just inexperienced workers.
Yeah, poor workers.
Well, they just don't know.
Yeah.
But anyhow, okay, so the birds are not gonna play. Well, let me, let me go down through this, we did look at, uh, we looked at some other schemes with a high pitched roof because we know, generally speaking, that gets the water off faster, and anytime you get the water off faster, and then it, you know, we know that that's what y'all have a lot of. We're okay with that, the reason why we're saying we prefer the other scheme is two reasons, cost. To put this pitched roof on here is about seven hundred to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars more. And the reason why is because you've got almost a second roof system, you got prefabricated trusses to support that, you got a metal roof, and you got insulation up there. And so, you've got a bunch of volume, even though that looks low, that's probably anywhere from ten to fifteen feet.
I'd say, yeah, yeah.
And so, you're paying for all that attic space. Now, the only advantage of that attic space, and we did this at Picky Union, but it was a third the size of this building, that's why we did it, is you can put some air handlers up there, then you gotta build a mezzanine up there to handle that. So, uh, but that's kinda what it would look like with the slope roof, and I think, you know, either one of, but this is, this is, we wanted to show this. This is, you can see why it costs more, this is what, this is the, the solution, our initial design. And you can see, there's pretty substantial slope in there. This is what you're baying for, and now it does get all the water off to gutters and things like that. This is a, with this roof system, you probably have less likely of any leaks as opposed to this one. But this one is, you have leaks when water does not get off fast, and you have leaks when it's interrupted by mechanical equipment and stuff like that. Standing water is what causes the leaks, if the water's moving and getting off, it can get off. So, what we're, what, what we're proposing in the initial scheme is to take all this water in one direction, that also saves money rather than pitching it to two, and collecting it here. And what you can see here, it's out, when I say it's outside the building, you can see it's, it's outside. So, we do have a problem, we're trying to.
Well, by the time water gets, you're like, 'cause I don't know how many feet that is outside the building, but it's probably.
He said six feet?
Eight, well, it's eight feet, is it eight feet?
Okay, yeah, that's, yeah, that's, it's ill outside.
We have to have overflow drains anyhow, in case the drain gets stopped up, it's code to have that. If, you're familiar with Jackson Prep recently, the roof collapsing?
Yeah.
That's because they did not have that, but that's an older design before all these codes came out.
That's what caused that?
Water, yeah, water, the weight of the water.
So, why is it gonna be seven hundred thousand more just because of the metal?
Well, you got a structure, you actually got a structure under it.
Yeah, you've got roof trusses, the roof trusses are gonna cost about, uh, three hundred thousand dollars. And then the roofing itself, because you have a slope, the, the, the second floor flat roof is about, well, is about thirty-three thousand square feet. But when you put a slope roof on there, you're getting up to about fifty-five thousand because of the.
You just gotta have a whole nother set of rafters under it, whole nother structure.
This is a structure right here that we're not showing. So, you already have this structure, now, again, this has some structure to it too, but it's not, it's not the volume, and you're paying for all this volume space here. Now, if you put the air handling units up there, you're to some extent we're cooping there, but we've already got that planned in the plan as it is.
With the, with the slope roof and the chiller on the ground, what are we looking our cost to be?
When you say slope, you're talking about this?
No, I'm talking about.
Uh, seventeen to eighteen million is where we're at right now. Now, we'll, if you remember the last time when we did, when we got toward the end of the project, we did a cost estimate, we were looking at, of course, it was eight thousand square feet more, nineteen and a half million dollars. We think, now, part of that was in the site, we had a two million dollar estimate for the site, we think we can cut that down to a little over a million dollars this time is what we're hoping.
Well, I thought we were closer to sixteen then.
Initially, we were, but we kept, things kept getting added to it and it, the, the estimate we had in November was nine, I believe it was nineteen and a half, I have to go back.
No, no, I thought we were sixteen after we cut out the, the land records.
Uh, we may. What we got?
I think a month ago you were saying, I think he came in, somebody's around sixteen to seventeen, about a month ago.
Well, and we may still be, but I'm, at this point, uh, you know, with the chiller, I'm thinking, you know, seventeen to eighteen.
Well, the chiller has created.
He said three hundred thousand.
Yeah, three, about three hundred thousand, I'm preliminary estimate, and we'll, we'll continue to upgrade that, I mean, you know, that estimate. It may be less than that, Jake, I just, uh.
I like the less word.
Well, we still, again, we still got some things to look at to refine this, and everything we do, cost is a priority in it. I mean, it's not necessarily number one, but I know we're looking at cost, it's, we want function and security and cost is right in there. So, we're looking at all that as a selection of materials. The, the floor plan is much more efficient and we were able to save that space. But we're at fifty-six, fifty-seven thousand, so that's, that's close to seventeen million dollars is what that is, is that, really.
Okay.
At three hundred dollars a square foot.
Wait, we moved nine thousand square feet off?
Eight to nine thousand, somewhere in there.
Well, that, that's two point seven million dollars right there, so.
From two, from nineteen and a half, so you're back down to what, seventeen million?
Okay.
I mean, I, you know, if it, if, to be honest with you, this thing can fluctuate a million dollars depending on the bid market, who's hungry. Now, we already know that we've got, we've already touched base with some Ricon County contractors, they are already very interested.
I bet.
Well, and you're gonna get other people, uh, you know, you're gonna get some big time contractors. But I tell you, a lot of it depends on what else is bidding at the time and what, what's going on with material supplies. And we're talking about business, you know, as I told you earlier, which probably gonna be now at the end of the summer, which I, I can't tell you what else has been at that point in time, usually that's a good time because what, what they'd be looking at is getting a project that they can start dirt work early fall and then carry something to, into the next year. So, in theory, that's a good time to bid this.
So, we need to decide today if we wanna go with the low slope or the metal roof?
Yeah, I mean, we can do either one.
I like the look of the, the slope metal roof, I like the cost.
Yeah, yeah. So, are y'all okay with doing the, the low slope?
Well, I think the low, with them having this eight foot overhang will help your, the problem you're, you're concerned about, Jay, and we all are, is the, the.
I just don't wanna repeat you.
Right, but I mean, it's gonna let the water have somewhere to, to get away from.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
That gully water should have someplace to go as opposed to.
And, and the fact, if you're not, you know, if you don't have any, uh, units up there or anything, then you don't have a place for water to build up.
Yeah, we talked about that a long time because three hundred thousand is three hundred thousand, but I've heard conversation about what happened at the other project and we're just trying.
What's happening?
We're trying to avoid that issue and as much as we can and, uh.
Yeah, we want y'all's good name to stay good.
Well, we would like to too, but that, but, you know, in theory, you shouldn't have, be having that problem at the other project, I don't understand what the issues are there, you know.
Do you, do you also look at the grand scheme of a project and the, and the stormwater, whether the water's going to go and whether that's going to impact us down North Street or wherever?
What we're having to do, let me go back, because we've already got Buster's people, we've already done some preliminary designs on that, which are technical drawing, but I'm, uh, I'm gonna show you, cause we've already looked at that, Bob. What they're gonna have to do, they're collecting water back here, as the drain comes there, comes down here and then comes all the way around the building. Eventually, it's going into this ditch, but before it gets there, they've got two huge underground pipes that they're retaining it. They have to by code and the city ordinances, so basically what that does, you collect all this water, and it's not so much from the building, it's all this paved area. And they're slowing that runoff down underground before it gets to this ditch and that's what's, that's, we're required to do that. Now, that costs some money, but that's figured into the budget to do that. Typically, if we had land, we would have a detention, a retention pond, it's less costly.
So, we're gonna have retention pipes? All our retention gonna be underground? There's gonna be a lot of water, ain't it?
Yeah, room to put it.
Right.
So, I mean, and that was the design we were having to do last time. You know, we, it would, it would require us to lose pretty good substantial parking to put a pond out there. That's, that's less expensive by far, you know, we, our original thought was possibly to being able to do that, put a fountain or something in there, but you can see, we just.
It could be our retention pond.
Well, we definitely need somebody inspecting all that when it gets installed, cause, you know, we don't need any sinkholes in our parking lots. Yeah.
We can't fix that.
Yeah, but I, that car that falls in it, we can't.
You like, you like that, what, ah-ha, or what was it, over the, um, ready?
Well, of course, that will all be inspected and tested, I mean, all that, all that backfill of that pipe is tested. And I, you know, I'm sure Buster's people have done this before, I mean, it's not, we've done it before actually.
Okay.
The only other thing you could do, and we did this on the coast, cause we just didn't have enough slope, you could do what's called pervious paving, but that's more expensive. And what that does is let the water just drip on through. But it, it can be a maintenance item because it's basically like Rice Krispies, and so you got little small fine holes in there, but if you get leaves and dirt and stuff.
So, so we're gonna maintain the underground?
They ain't no maintaining it, is it?
Yeah, it shouldn't be maintained, it shouldn't, I mean, you're the expert in this there and not me.
They have to be maintained, they get clogged up like everything else.
They'll be, uh.
Be hard, it's gonna take a lot to clog it, but yeah, yes, you're right, but.
They have to be maintained, otherwise your parking lot will.
Human body.
Well, I, you know, unless we can get some more property to the north.
I just never heard of that.
Can y'all get some more property up here?
No, sure, no, sure.
Or this piece here, judge, doesn't the judge have that?
The judge just walked to work now.
I mean. You, you know if they looked at that? Well, I don't, I mean, there's not a whole lot of islands though, is the thing.
You can hold water in green spaces, the drainage works out instead of putting underground, long as your path works out.
We don't wanna lose any parking.
So, I agree.
Well, the problem is, and this doesn't show, this slopes straight downhill, this slopes from there to there, I mean, there may could be some, some retention right there, but.
Well, what we need to decide today is, uh, in addition to what we've already done, is how we want the roof to be done. We okay, I think we're all right with the, can live with the flat roof.
Yeah, I'm all right with that, love the slope you have.
Well, well, yeah.
Yeah, let's don't use the word flash.
And we're going, we're gonna go with the chiller system? Right, bite the bullet.
Try to bring it to the north side of the building?
Yes, yes, we're gonna look at that and, uh, because what, even if it takes up a few parking spaces, we, we'll get them back here, so I don't think it'll be any different.
What other direction do you need from us today?
I think that's basically it, we just need to, we, we've kinda been going around and around till we can get this, these decisions.
Yeah, we have.
Now, we will, we will want to come back to y'all maybe in a month or so and update you on everything.
I like the look of it.
I'd like to stay out of jail, would be the other comment.
Is that the look we're going with, what that, there's other pictures of the elevator?
Uh, well, we got, that's what I need to come back to, we've, basically, that is correct. We've got, we've got, we gotta work on materials and things, colors, uh, and we, we're gonna look, we're gonna continue to look at this, but.
Looks a lot like a federal courthouse.
Is that a white or granite?
We hadn't got, it's gonna be some kinda off-white or buff or something like that, or it could be even a different color. That's what we've gotta study, we just run out of time to study different colors. I mean, the, uh.
What do you think?
We know, we know that basically what you have right now is buff colored buildings and we're looking at it as a way to complement that. The other thing is, we were trying to get, you know, make a, two things, give, give the county somewhat of an identity and also do, uh, you know, judicial, but, you know, we're, if y'all got heartburn with any of this, that's, we need to know that and we need to study some more things, if there's something y'all don't feel is appropriate with this. We think it works very well, but that's, that's, you know, we work for you guys.
Well, I don't know, I don't know if I like it or not, but I don't know what to compare it to, you know, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what my options are, you know.
Well, the first building they showed us was the one in Picky Union, and I'll be honest with you, I had in my mind, that's what we were getting, something like that. But, I mean, this, it looks like a courthouse.
The more cosmetic out there, like you said, in the front, the architectural design, the more expensive it is.
Well, that's the thing we looked at here, that's signage, we, we're probably gonna have signage at the front here and, and down here and maybe even at the corner. We would probably have some type of seal or something, we hadn't worked all that details out exactly, but you're right, but you made a good point, Jerry. What we try to do is keep this simple, because simple means less costly, now.
Well, a lot of it just looks good, but has, really has no, uh, purpose but other than cost to look good.
Picky Union did have more detail on it, you're right, uh, but it was just, it was a third the size of this facility. And, but I went back and checked that yesterday on the cost of that, and that was six years ago with bids, it'd be almost seven by the time, so I, and trying to figure out how much more cost inflation is. Well, and we did get a good price on it, I will say that, it was right at two hundred dollars a square foot.
Well, that looks, uh, similar to our existing, um, circuit court building.
Do you want that, or is that the kinda consistency you're trying to go with, is that now?
We're trying to, Bob, trying, trying to make it lend to some extent, but be different from what, from what, everything you have to give it its own identity, but, I mean, that's our opinion, that's, you know, we'll, if you think we need to look at something else, we can do that. We think that it'll make a nice image, uh, that's being our opinion. And we, we're not be playing with this at this point either, that's why I wanna come back to y'all in another month and update. But what, the decisions you have made, I think, will allow us to get our, see, we had, our engineers have been on hold cause we didn't know how many entrances and some other things, and now we can turn them loose, and I say that structural, mechanical, electrical.
Good to go, as far as I'm concerned.
Aight. Good job, sir, anybody got any other questions? All right, thank you, Carl.
Well, we're, if you do, if there's any other concerns, y'all need to get us back.
Would you get that light switch back here, please?
Just contact us, we're available twenty-four seven.
I just wanna compliment your team, they did a good job today.
Hopefully, it doesn't last as long as the amendments.
Uh, do we have?
We have neither, with executive.
Do we really?
We do.
We do?
We do, we'll make it brief, we promise.
Yeah, we need to make it brief, we need to celebrate Mr., uh, Dale.
I don't call it celebrate.
About to leave us.
Celebrate him leaving?
Recognize.
Recognize would be good.
Celebrate retirement?
Yeah, celebrate his retirement.
Okay, celebrate retirement, say it that way.
I have a motion by Mr. Morrow to discuss the need going to executive session, second by Mr. Cross, all in favor, say aye. Ayes have it.
Everybody get out.
Please.
Hey, man, my wife always says, you can always tell at lunchtime, but Bob gets crankier. Ryan, I assume your officer's okay? I assume your officer is okay?
What, 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 messed up his shoulder?
Right.
Oh, wow, he got major concussion, huh?
Daniel, did you ever find out what the cause of the accident was up on forty-three with the fire truck and?
They ruled it, they ruled it against the fire truck, it didn't stop.
Heck, they put that in the paper even. Afterwards, they come in and it says the highway patrol ruled against the county and let everybody know it was our fault.
Well, I just think it was pretty obvious.
Well, it's like it was pretty obvious.
Yeah, well, you look at his pictures, they in the other side of the road, down the, the ditch.
He's got skin marks running from the Ford stop.
Probably saw a car behind him, didn't see the motorcycle.
Oh, wow, I thought she, the Ford stop sign through, that's what the fire truck did, right?